We'd like to welcome everyone to the Provo Municipal Council meeting for October 8th, 2019. It is 5:31 and we are gathered in the City Center Municipal Council chambers at 351 West Center Street in Provo, Utah. Our crowd here is decidedly of a younger demographic than general and we welcome you all here. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web, on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests the attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices, being respectful to others, and refraining from applause or other outbursts during the proceedings of the meeting. We will begin with a roll call.
Cliff Strachan. Brian Jones.
Gary Winington.
George Stewart.
Dave Sewell.
David Harding.
Cave Amburran.
Dave Connect.
George Handley.
Mayor Cuffusi.
Wayne Parker.
And we'd like to extend a special welcome to the mayor. Welcome back and we wish you a speedy recovery. And we will have an opening prayer given by Mr. Dane Johnson, following which we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Caleb Palmer.
Our kindly gracious Father of Heaven, we're grateful we could all come together today and be gathered with the city and those visiting. And please help us to be able to promote productive discussion today and be able to make progress in whatever doing we need to. And please bless those around the city and the area who may need assistance, that they may be blessed by those around them and we say these things.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Palmer. Our first item of business is a joint proclamation welcoming students from Provo's sister city, And this will be presented to us by our mayor, Michelle Cuffusi.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I feel like I'm super close. I feel like I'm like, hello. I mean, this is scooted closer than normal.
I did that before we started.
Did you, on purpose? Okay, because it's thrown me off a little. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to present a proclamation with our sister city, Meisen, Germany. And I brought my dear friend Stefan Van Orden with me because there's some words in the proclamation that I have a son that served in Germany, he would be so embarrassed if I tried to pronounce them. So I'm going to point to the ones I can't pronounce and he'll take it from there. So whereas friendly exchanges between Meisen and Provo can be dated back to 2001, this being the ninth bi-annual exchange between the...
Franziskanium.
Gymnasium and the Timview High School German classes and whereas gratitude is extended to Cordula...
Von Leitner.
Who founded the exchange for the...
Franziskanium Gymnasium.
As well as...
Katrin Werner-Hartmann.
Much better. And Suzanne...
Susanna Roche.
Who now lead the exchange as well as principal...
Heike Simmel.
Whose support makes the exchange possible as well as many teachers at the...
Franziskanium.
For their tireless planning and efforts to ensure successful, ongoing exchanges. And whereas the city of Provo acknowledges the strength of educational, cultural, social, and economic exchanges between Provo and Meisen, which has outlasted changes in administrations, natural disasters, and changes of all kinds. And whereas the city of Provo honors and cherishes the friendship shared with officials, teachers, and students of the...
Franziskanium Gymnasium.
As well as many residents of Meisen, we look forward to a long future of exchanges and strengthened relations between our cities. Now, therefore, I, Michelle Cuffusi, in cooperation with the Provo City Council and all the citizens of Provo, offer a warm welcome to teachers and students and extend a heartfelt thank you to the Timview host families. May this visit be one of new and renewed friendships, pleasant adventures, and goodwill. Thank you. I'll now turn the time over to my deputy mayor, Isaac Paxman, to just share a few remarks.
And after that, the teachers would like to say some words of thank you as well.
Yes.
I was given the opportunity to just share a little bit of my family's experience with this exchange program. If you want to put the first picture up there. This is my son, Josh, on the left, and that's Tom Finn Dyson from Germany. He lived with Tom for a couple of weeks in Germany and then Tom lived with us. We had another exchange student as well, and it's just been a real enrichment to our lives. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had Tom's parents come stay with us and we were able to show them around Provo and do some things. Let's show that other picture if we can. And it was really fun because we took them to get T-shirts and we were really touched because he always called her his German mom. This is Mrs. Finn Dyson who got the Brigham Young Mom shirt because Josh, she's Josh's German mom. So, and that's my daughter there as well. So it's been a great and fun experience for us and we look forward to maybe someday going to Meisen ourselves, but we appreciate everybody who's made this possible because it's really helped us have great friendships with a number of students, including some who didn't even stay with us, but then later came and stayed with us, who were just in the larger group that we had gotten to know. And so it's been, it's been a great thing and I applaud everyone who's made this possible.
Thank you, Mr. Paxman.
Based on what Mr. Paxman just said, I'd like to add a couple of words. There have been many, many experiences like this where we have opened a feather pillow and tossed the feathers to the wind and we have no idea where all of them have gone, but there's almost not a week that goes by where I don't hear from somebody who says, "I still have contact with this person," or "this person came to visit me," or "we went to visit them." There are many interwoven connections that we can't even measure at this point. The teachers.
Dear mayor and gentlemen of the city Provo council, almost 20 years ago, we had our first visit to Provo with the exchange group. Back in 2001, nobody knew how this project might develop. We are here now for the 10th time because this exchange program developed extremely well and we can say we have become a family. Timview High School and the Franziskanium Meisen, the city of Provo and the city of Meisen have grown together, long-lasting friendships have developed, a vivid cultural and language exchange has taken place. We are three out of 79 teachers from the Franziskanium, of which, all in all, 20 teachers have taken part in the program. Some of us are so convinced of this program that they have accompanied the students several times. My name is Susanna Roche and I'm here for the fourth time.
I'm Katrin Werner-Hartmann and I'm here for the fourth time.
I'm Anka Sonntagler and it's my first time.
So as you can see, this exchange program is not only for students but also for teachers. Almost every time, somebody new joins us. At first sight, every trip seems the same, but then every trip turns out to be unique. Why? Because the people are different, times have changed, and so have we. But one thing always stays the same. We all strive for the same goal, mutual understanding. Things we especially value are friendship, education, tolerance, and culture. These aims are close to both Timview's mission of growth, inclusion, excellence, and our schools' concept of teaching intercultural competence and open-mindedness. And therefore, we are grateful that both city councils support this exchange program wholeheartedly. The Lord Mayor of Meisen sends his best wishes and has asked us to give you these small presents. Thank you for welcoming us.
Please, our present.
Thank you very much.
For the governor of Meisen. Maybe one day, ten times. Okay, we're planning to do it next year.
Next year for the Heimfest. She told me before. And now that she's told me, it has to happen.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, how many students are here from Provo? Just put your hands up. And how many are you visiting from Meisen? It's impressive. We're glad to have you here, all of you. Welcome, yeah, thank you. And we were discussing this among the council. How many on the council have German ancestry? Four of the seven, so.
Yeah, I lived in Germany in 1989, excuse me, 1988, in West Berlin for six months as a study abroad student when I was in college. And my son Sam was in Stefan's class. I'm very much an admirer of what you do and appreciate it very much. And I want to say...
And a very good student.
Oh, thank you, I'll tell him. Yeah, I just texted him.
I've heard you before.
Yes. I just texted him and he sent me a picture of himself just today, wearing his Franziskanium shirt. So he was wearing it today, just by coincidence. Wir freuen uns Sie als Studenten im Provo zu begrüßen.
Well, welcome to all of you. Item two is a presentation on the city's public information program for Provo City in recognition of Nisha King as the recipient of the Communicator of the Year Award by the Utah Public Information Officers Association. This will also be presented by...
I know, I should just take a seat in the audience tonight. It is my honor and privilege to introduce my PIO, which is Nicole Martin. Nicole, I was just thinking, they probably don't see you as much and have as much face time because they're not here all day. But Nicole is fairly new to the city and is just doing a wonderful job. And I don't want to, we've got some future plans to do a wonderful presentation, so I don't want to go into detail about her job description or some great things we're working on, but I'll turn the time over to her because we do have a, we have a great win for the city.
Honorable mayor and city council, it's my pleasure to be here with you tonight, particularly for the subject matter. So just a few brief moments on the communications program. One of the primary directives that Mayor Cuffusi gave me was to improve overall city communications by creating a one-of-its-kind public information team, and I am proud to say that has now been done. You have 28 public information officers, representatives from every department, that are now meeting weekly to meet the goal that the mayor has set forward, and that is timely, accurate, informative information to our residents to help them engage with us on a more regular basis. And why is this so important? Because regardless of the form of government, citizens only see one voice coming from the city. And if we ourselves are not speaking with one voice internally, that will become readily evident. And so this is the purpose of that. You will now see messaging that is coordinated, amplified by each department through their individual social media channels, and then of course, very consistent city branding, not only in look and feel, which is what people think of when they think of branding, but more importantly, with the messaging, with the vision of the city as set forward by yourselves and of course, the mayor. We will be maintaining the current information channels that you see and maximizing those. And then we're always looking for new and innovative channels that will help us better achieve the goals that I've just outlined. So we'll come to you with kind of an explanation of what that looks like in the future, but more importantly, we are here to honor one of our own with a very distinguished honor. So I'm going to invite Nisha to come up. And I am going to read, "In our conference that took place last week by the Utah Public Information Officers Association, Nisha received the very distinguished honor of Communicator of the Year." There are hundreds of PIOs that attend this conference. One Communicator of the Year is given. So I cannot stress strongly enough how valued Nisha is. So I am going to go ahead and read the presentation as it was given to Nisha, if I could. All right, you ready? You've heard it before, here we go again. "Nothing hurts worse than losing one of your own. Sergeant Nisha King had the unenviable duty of getting information out to the public regarding the line-of-duty death of fellow Provo police officer and SWAT team member Joe Schinners. Nisha has taken Provo's police communications to a high level. She has shown initiative and creativity largely through social media posts, including non-emergency items. For example, she has spearheaded a successful 9:00 PM routine campaign encouraging people to lock their cars and homes and otherwise prepare for the nighttime hours. She has also initiated a plan to prepare templates and information for virtually every conceivable disaster or other incident. Nisha is easy to work with," it's very important, "she's flexible, she builds bridges of trust and communication, and has become a bright light within the Provo City organization. And she is tireless." And I will say, having worked with PIOs for years, the public information PIO is in fact the hardest one. There is no rest for her. So she has received a certificate, what I wanted to give her, that I thought she was in need of, was forced relaxation, with no cellphone allowed. So we have got a gift certificate for her, and again, no cellphone allowed. So if we could, please just clap in her honor because she has done an amazing job."
Truly, this is an honor to be selected as the Communicator of the Year by my peers of other public information officers. But quickly, I just want to thank Chief Ferguson, all of my command staff, thank you, Mayor Cuffusi, and all of you for your support. This is a great place to work and I appreciate the opportunity that I've been given. So, thank you.
Thank you, Officer King. If we could, we'd like to take a picture with you and maybe the chief and, you know, others involved with this. And then if it's all right, we would also like, after we take that picture, we would also like to invite the students from Meisen, the students from Timview, if we could all take a picture up here as well, just to have that for our memory. So first off, the picture with Sergeant King.
Thank you. Thank you, guests. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then we'd like to invite all of the students, teachers, anyone involved in the picture.
It's German for cheese.
It's German for cheese.
This will be presented by Karen Tapahay, our community relations coordinator for the council.
Hello, councilors. You'll have to forgive my voice, I'm recovering from a bad cold. It's a punishment for taking vacation is you get sick. Just wanted to say something also about the PIO organization. In my time here, it's been an interesting dilemma of trying to keep both sides of government in contact and it's been a really exciting thing to work with Mayor Cuffusi's staff and kind of get a more organized effort. I think we come across a lot better as a city when we know on all sides what's happening. And it was a real joy to be down there at the PIO Association Conference and see Sergeant King receive that award. And everyone knew she deserved it even though she shies away from the attention, but that was no easy feat, even though she had a lot of help and she'll tell you that. But it's no easy feat to do the hard work that she does in the middle of the chaos of a situation like that. And I'm so glad she had that opportunity. In the 51 years that we've had our neighborhood program, the downtown neighborhood, which was formerly known as the Central Business District, has only had a business representative for most of the years of its existence. I believe in the beginning, there was a mayoral appointment of someone who probably lived sort of in the area, but over the years, it became the duty of the Downtown Business Alliance and then later Downtown Provo Inc., that they had that representative. And a few years ago, we brought up the fact that there is increasing residential activity happening downtown and the ordinance was changed to allow for two neighborhood chairs to represent downtown. One, we retained the one on the business side and then added a residential representative. And I know some people may not be aware of the growth in the residences downtown. In two, yeah, two years ago, there were just under 600 residential addresses, and in that two years, we've added at least 300 more. Pretty, well, and pretty soon we'll be heading 1,000 at least with developments that are underway. And to put that in perspective, there are only 11 other neighborhoods of our 34 that have 1,000 or more residential addresses, you know, done by our GIS department counting those for us. And so it's a remarkable thing. We have a lot of people who have chosen to live in the heart of our city and a very different lifestyle because we don't have the same kind of setup with homes and yards and everything. It was really exciting to hold the election for these residential representatives because they represent a different voice for Provo. And I'm really excited to see them get involved and help people understand, you know, those different choices. We each live in different neighborhoods for different reasons and it's exciting to see the downtown neighborhood represented. So I want to introduce you to Rich Nelson, who is the neighborhood chair, and Michael McKenzie, the vice chair for the downtown neighborhood. And I wondered if they could come up and say a few words about their lovely neighborhood. Okay, they were just here.
I'm here. I don't...
Oh. Well, Michael, you can speak for Rich then.
Your first duty is vice chair. Speak for Rich. Hi, I'm Michael McKenzie. I live right in downtown Provo. I am very excited about the neighborhood program and I'm very excited to represent the people of downtown. I'm excited to make sure that the people downtown are informed of what's going on in the city and also make sure that the voices are heard of the people downtown. I love downtown Provo. I fell in love with it before I ever even moved to Provo. I am constantly shocked by the amount of art and culture that comes out of our city. And I'm really excited to represent the residents and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. And thank you...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, "Great shirt," by the way.
Yeah, I thought I'd represent.
Excellent, thank you. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting and I would like to ask Mr. Brian Jones to give us the preamble.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to. As indicated on the screen momentarily, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, or others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda.
Thank you. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium now. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium now.
My name is Rachel Montalvo. I have a cold as well. And I'm a resident of Provo. And I'm here tonight to extend a personal invitation to our city council members and our mayor to attend an event that is happening a week from today with the Circles Initiative. I'm not sure if you've heard of it. But Circles is a community initiative that helps lower-income residents achieve self-sufficiency and to become free of reliance on government programs to help support themselves. And so, we'd like to extend an invitation to a special evening that we're hosting. It's called Evening with Circles and it happens over at the Seventh-day Adventist Church that's just over here off of Seventh East. So, I'd like to leave these invitations, if I may, and we would love to see you at our event next week.
Okay, thank you. Just give those to the city recorder or council executive director. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will close this portion and move on to item four. An implied motion on an ordinance amending the general plan designation of approximately 1.34 acres of real property, generally located at 1,900 North Canyon Road, from commercial to residential. This is in the Pleasant View neighborhood and will be presented by Mr. Robert Mills, Provo City Planner.
Okay, thank you very much. As we discussed today in work meeting, this is a proposal by the applicant to rezone and redesignate on the general plan map this specific parcel. Bryce, are those slides? Yeah. Council Chair, do you want to read item five as well?
Yes, I will read in. Item five, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.34 acres of real property, generally located at 1,900 North Canyon Road, from public facilities to campus mixed use. And at the same location. So, we've read them both in, we will discuss them together, but we'll hold separate votes on these two items.
And did you want to mention that Mr. Stewart's request?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. And I should have mentioned that item four is a public hearing. Item five, we will open for public comment as well. And the rules of the council is that when we... The first hearing of an item that comes through the planning commission, if even a single counselor would like to continue the item, so we have an additional two weeks to discuss, receive public input, then the item is continued until the next meeting, which actually in this case is three weeks. And there's already been an indication. So, we anticipate that these two items will be continued for three weeks until the next one. But we want to have the discussion now to help kickstart that communication.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the property in question is actually at the corner of Canyon Road, which is up here, and Stadium Avenue. The Brigham Young University Football Stadium is to the south. And the property is currently used by the Utah Community Credit Union. They have a long-established branch there. They have since... They've been in the process of actually constructing a new building on Freedom Boulevard, excuse me. And they'll be vacating the premises soon. The applicant is the potential buyer of this property. And their proposal is to rezone and redesignate the property to allow for 121-unit residential building consisting of 121 one-bedroom units on the property. And so, to kind of explain what's going on currently, this is a current general plan map. You can see that the property is currently designated as commercial for the future land use of this property. Commercial designation does not allow residential uses. And so, the applicant is requesting that it be redesignated as residential, which is shown on this proposed general plan map. This slide shows the current zoning. The parcel is currently zoned public facilities, likely due to its association historically with Brigham Young University and its close proximity to institutional uses. It's worth noting that a financial institution would actually be considered non-conforming in this zone today. So, if somebody wanted to come and do this, they could not build the UCCU building on that site currently. Because of that, the applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to the campus mixed-use zone, which would allow a higher-density residential project on the site. In light of some things that were mentioned today in work meeting, I just wanted to read to you the purpose and objectives of this zone to kind of explain why we, as staff, support this specific zone. The campus mixed-use zone is established to provide high-density housing and a mix of residential and commercial uses near Brigham Young University. The densities permitted by the zone are intended to encourage redevelopment of land for residential uses where property values are high and demolition is necessary. The uses typically permitted in this zone are apartments, batching apartments, condominiums, and commercial services for the convenience of those living in the area or neighborhood commercials. So, for those reasons, we felt that the campus mixed-use zone would actually be appropriate, given its proximity to the university, given its proximity to additional housing around there. And specifically, the line in here that says, "where property values are high and demolition is necessary." And both of those situations seem to exist at this property. Additionally, the campus mixed-use zone, as we discussed today, does not have a specific density limitation. Rather, it's limited by the lot and the zoning regulations such as height setbacks, parking requirements. So, that's why it doesn't have a specific density requirement in the zone, but it's automatically limited by the utilization of the site. Just to conclude, council members, the staff was able to review this application. This has been ongoing for quite some time. And the proposal for the site has changed quite a bit over time. This is a site plan showing the basement floor units and the... So, the garden units, rather. And an entrance to the parking garage from Stadium Avenue on the bottom of your screen. And then, this is the second... What we would consider the first floor with units wrapping the building and then another entrance to the second level of the parking structure from Canyon Road. The project continues on up for a total of five stories, if you consider that from the south end. And it would be four stories based on the north end, given the topography of Canyon Road and the specific area. And so, this is kind of a rendering of what the project would look like at the finished phase. The neighborhood did hold a meeting, as you probably read in the staff reports. Initially in August of this year, the meeting was well-attended and there were several concerns that were expressed. The applicant seems to have been working with the neighborhood and will be here again tomorrow night for Planning Commission for the project plan portion of this application. Given the site's specific location and proximity to the university, the separation from the core, single-family neighborhood, single-family residential part of the Pleasant View neighborhood, staff felt that this was actually a good utilization of the corner, provided needed housing. And the applicant is actually meeting the parking requirements for the zone. And so, staff was able to support this. The applicant has recently submitted a development agreement. There may be concerns that the council has or the neighborhood has that could be mitigated through that development agreement process. And so, that's all the questions... Or that's all the information that I have for you available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any questions?
Is the size of the apartment 685 square feet or something close to that?
The size of the unit is about 600, right? 685.
Okay. And these are going to be apartments or something for sale?
Apartments.
Right. Target audience?
Target audience that the applicant has indicated are married students. Given the one-bedroom nature, close proximity to a major university, it would seem that would be the target market.
Thank you.
One of the projects that we've approved that has created heartburn in a neighborhood is the one on Ninth East where that building is so close, right next to the sidewalk. It's real close. What kind of setbacks will these have? I'm not seeing exactly... Is that in the project plan approval?
So, that's mostly in the project plan portion of it. But at this point, there's a little bit of discrepancy as far as where the sidewalk is going to be. Currently, the sidewalk on Canyon Road and Stadium Avenue, it's like a curb-sidewalk combination. That seems to work well in that specific location because of the neighboring use of the stadium, where you can get a large amount of people through there. And it's not going to create maybe a landscaping detriment that the traditional standard... Because the standard required by Public Works and by code is that there is the curb, then a landscaping strip, then the sidewalk. So, in this case, the applicant is advocating that they continue what's existing there, which would actually create about a 20-foot setback of landscaping from the sidewalk.
From the sidewalk, 20-foot back.
That's correct, right. The applicant is also here and ready to answer questions for you as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills? Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
We would like to invite Mr. Dave Hunter from Silverado Management or anyone who you would like to present as the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I am Dave Hunter from Silverado Management. We've been doing projects in Provo for a long time. We are vested in Provo. We love Provo. One of the big assets we have in Provo is we own the Qualtrics Campus. We're doing some things around UVU, but we've been doing things in Provo for many years. We've been working on this project for a long time. We've been working hand-in-hand with the city. We've been working with the neighborhood, the neighborhood chair. And their input has been appreciated and we hope that we've taken what they've said and put it into what the concurrent plan is to get the support of the neighborhood. We've taken a full story off the building to pacify some of their concerns. We've resolved some parking things. We've resolved some bike things. But we've been working at this for a long time. And I think from all the input, we're getting to a place where we think that we will have support of the neighborhood. Obviously, not everybody in the neighborhood, but we should have some consensus support from the neighborhood. Why this project, this location? In the traffic study, that we had the traffic study done by Hell's Engineering, from the commercial use to this use, the traffic is going to be... The traffic study bore out that is going to reduce traffic by about 75%. And they said, even if there's some discretionary error in that, it's still emptying out on the Canyon Road. And even if there was some discrepancy in that study, Canyon Road will absorb the project very easily without being an impact on the neighborhood. This will be a walking amenity. Kids will be able to walk from this project to campus. The new VUX line will be right around the corner. You walk down south of the stadium and that's where the nearest pickup will be. We're doing a huge bike facility inside of the parking structure. They'll actually have bike lockers, repair stations. You talked about the setbacks. Right now, the city code and the city ordinance is that they want the setback from the sidewalk or from the curb, then landscape, then sidewalk, then more landscaping and just knowing what's going to happen on game day. We're proposing that we just continue on the sidewalk where it is contemplated all the way up Canyon Road, just because we assume that during game days, people will just trample through the landscaping and destroy it. It doesn't do anything to the setback. It doesn't do anything to try and discourage anything. We just think it's a logical thing not to have the landscaping trampled every game and keep the sidewalk kind of where it's at. Urban sprawl, and this is, you know, when we talk about urban sprawl, Provo's been discovered. You guys have done such a great job. I was in Singapore last week and people asked where we were from. And I said, "I'm from the Provo-Orem area." People in Singapore know where we're at. That's how good we've done in marketing ourselves and attracting people. We are no longer a rural bedroom community. We are now a major city with major companies coming in. You talk about population, population growth. It is staggering the amount of people that are going to be coming in to Provo and Orem and Utah County in the next 20 years. And our offices are right at the mouth of the canyon. And I have a view of Eighth North and University Avenue. And without a traffic study, sitting there for the last six years, just looking out my window, traffic and the construction aside, it's now miles of traffic in all directions. And if we don't curb urban sprawl on some level, this place is going to be... It took us... We left the office today at 5:00 and got here at 5:35 today. And I was in a total panic because we left a half hour early and I thought we'd be here in plenty of time and we were five minutes late. It's a zoo coming down here. Unless we start taking these assets in this large tract of land that we actually have and repurposing and thinking they're going to take cars and people off the road and start really planting these precious last big parcels of land in the city, it is... It's going to become... It really is. It's already becoming a zoo. And I can't imagine what this place is going to be in 20 years. The development agreement, there was... Not that there was a hiccup, but I know that there was a little consternation in the development agreement that was sent over from our party to the city. And, you know, we've agreed on 121 units in our development agreement that we sent over. It had 125 units. The height is going to be in the 56 to... And I say 60-foot range. We don't know exactly. Part of the Provo process that we really appreciate now is developers, you're not incurring... You're not imposing all the costs that we need to do to get a project through, to expedite what's going on. So, we've not taken this to engineering yet. We have not gone to a full set of construction docs yet. And until we get a full set of construction docs, we can't tell you to the inch what this project is going to be. We can give you a very solid, general idea of what it's going to be, but we're willing to commit to 121 units. We put 125 in there just because we haven't gone to construction docs. We thought if there's going to be... You know, we don't know exactly where this is going to end up. But we were 100% willing to commit to 121 units. That is really what the city or what the neighborhood wanted. The exact height, until we have an engineered plan, I can't come in and tell you to the inch what it's going to be. So, we put 65 feet in the development agreement. That's just because we don't know when we go to engineering if the tresses are going to be, you know, per floor. If they go four inches a floor, there might be a couple of feet of latitude. I don't know. And we don't want to go back to zero if we're a foot over what the development agreement says. But the spirit of the development agreement is, we took a full floor off the apartment building. That is what we're going to do. It's going to be a four-story with a basement or a five-story, however you look at it, apartment complex within standard building height. And we, you know, outside of having an engineered set of plans, I can't tell you to the inch what it's going to be, but it is going to be in that 56 to 60-foot range, barring and depending on engineering. But we're willing to commit to the development agreement and say that this is the spirit of what it's going to be. And until we go, you know, the couple of months it's going to take with the red lines back and forth with the city and the departments and the various departments in there, we don't know exactly what the project to the inch is going to be until we kind of arrive at a construction set of plans. But that is the spirit and we're not baiting... But that is the spirit, and we're not baiting and switching the neighborhood. That is exactly what we're contemplating. And when we get down a little bit further down the road, we can come in and tell you exactly what the, to the inch, what the building height is going to be. And with that being said, Councilman Stewart, I, from the microphone, he said that you were kind of the one that wanted to hear a little bit more. And so if you have any specific questions, we know the project pretty intimately.
I've been in city government a long time, and development agreements are development agreements. And we have had everyone else that gave us, gave us the height. I will vote against this if it's not fifty-five feet. I will vote against it if it's not one twenty-one. To say you can't give it to us, it's just not true. We've got too many other developers that have come in and have given us the height limitation under the development agreement. So that's just going to be my position. I'm going to ask you this, go two more weeks. Hopefully, you'll come back with an agreement that is consistent with what you've told the neighborhood. If not, I'll be voting against it.
And fifty-five feet, the neighborhood is saying fifty-six feet.
I'll go with fifty-six then. I'll let Paul Evans tell me which one it is. I'm sorry. I thought it was just.
Okay. And I can't remember from, actually, I do remember, but the building was sixty-nine feet. And it is, and we can pull up the city meetings or the city minutes, but we dropped, when we dropped that level, it dropped it down ten feet and it dropped it down to fifty-nine feet. And that was what was presented, and that's what we kind of got the support in the neighborhood from. But we can go back and look at that. And again, we want a consensus with the neighborhood. We want, we want Mr. Evans to be happy. We want the neighborhood to be happy, dropping that whole level. But, and I know some developers probably come in, but I don't know how you can come to an exact, exact footage without an engineered, we don't know what the trusses between the floors are. And if it goes from an eight-inch trust to a twelve-inch trust, I don't know, I don't know how somebody could come in and confidently tell you exactly to the inch what their building height is going to be when it's a matter of inches that we're talking about.
I'll go from fifty-five to fifty-six. So I'll give you those twelve inches.
Thank you. But, and with that being said, Mr. Stewart, we have made a lot of concessions on this project to stick it into the box that the neighborhood would get behind. And I would be devastated if you, on principle or whatever, if we have a great project that's aesthetically good and it's an asset to the city, that if it's off by four inches, if you wouldn't give us your support, that would, that would be tough for us to hear and handle. We really bent over backwards to accommodate a lot of people on this project.
I lived in that neighborhood for quite a while, so I'm going to go with what the neighborhood wants because I think what they're asking for is fair and consistent with what else is in the area.
All right. So we've got a few comments, but let me turn over to Mr. Jones first.
I just wanted to suggest that maybe before we get too far down the road about the details of the development agreement, that there's probably some other methods for maybe accomplishing the same purpose. And I think that's Mr. Stewart's intent in asking for it to be continued for a few weeks. But it's, it's actually often more common for us to attach the drawings and specify the number of floors rather than a specific number for the, for the height other than an overall cap. So I don't know whether that'll satisfy the neighborhood or not, but there are some, there are some things we can do potentially to accomplish same purpose, the same purpose other than to just focus in on that one number.
And in the spirit of that, the spirit of that was the neighborhood wanted us to take a floor off the building, and that's what we did. And how the height ended up, I didn't, I didn't realize the feet were the important thing. I thought the floor was the important thing. And we lobbed off the floor. And, and so I'm with you, that the spirit of this is that is the project, and we are not going to go add another floor if we get the zone change done.
So I think, I think these next three weeks will be a good opportunity to work out these things. I believe where the height came in was, was the development agreement that was proffered that we received. Depending on discussions with the neighborhood, perhaps, you know, specifying the floors as Mr. Jones just suggested might be a good way to approach that.
And again, just in, in, Joe, I've actually been out of the country. So Joe is the, and he put the number in just so there's flex, I mean, we know that this is what we're doing, and he didn't want it to go to fifty-eight and a half feet and have to go back to zero because it turned, I mean, and that's the ten I had was the spirit of this, is that's, they wanted us to do this. And it wasn't exactly to the inch what the foot is. And we just didn't want to, I mean, again, we don't have the engineered drawings. And we didn't want to come back and have to go through the entire process again because we're a few inches off either way.
Mr. Winterdin?
Has there been a measurement done? Can you go back to the picture that shows the stadium and then homes behind it? Is it possible to do that?
That last slide, that's actually inaccurate. That is a dead accurate.
Not, not, not the slide of, not the drawing. I want to see the actual, okay, right there. Those homes on the top, the elevation of those homes, what is that from the Canyon Road? What are, about how high up are those homes? I just, I know that people get concerned about their view, and I know that nothing in the Constitution guarantees a view. But on the other hand, if you get a certain height.
Is this a laser pointer?
Yeah. So if you had some of those homes right there.
So that right there is the only, so that home is completely buried, you don't see it. And that right there is the only home that looks down and sees our property. So it's one home, and he's six, the bottom of his elevation is sixty feet.
Sixty, sixty feet, the bottom of his foundation is sixty feet above Canyon Road?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was curious.
And, yeah, Canyon Stadium, it's sixty feet above that corner right there.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question for Wayne. It seems like we have tried to reduce the high cost of developing in Provo, and we've tried to streamline the process. And so here we have a developer who's saying that he has not put this out to the architects because that would cost a fair amount of money on what might be a gamble. And so it seems like it's reasonable that he doesn't know the exact height.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. It is reasonable. Again, as you'll recall, a number of years ago, it cost easily for a rezone, it cost about a hundred thousand dollars of a developer's time and money and engineers and architects to get to every, every element of the, of the design. And then frequently, changes would occur as a result of planning commission or other things. And we had developers who came to council and others that said, that's just unreasonable for a rezone. And so we crafted then, back then, adopted an ordinance that allowed for what we call a concept plan, which was designed to be maybe a quarter to a half of that cost, to get enough information to make a policy decision about a rezone, with the understanding that once that was reached and a development agreement was signed and the zoning was approved, that they would go back and do the detailed engineering. And we get into a lot of the specifics, particularly around underground utilities. But it also might raise some concerns about how high the building is up off the ground. We may not have done, for example, a lot of seismic or groundwater work to define exactly where the groundwater was. And if the building had to be pushed a foot or two up, or if it could be put a little bit further down to accommodate underground parking or other things that, that those would be kind of dealt with in the, in the plan review process. So, yeah, it's certainly not unreasonable to be uncertain within a few feet, foot or two or three, what, what would likely be the outcome. So I think it's a, it's a fair concern about it. And again, the, as you know, development agreements have conditions that are proffered, and the council can accept the proffer or not accept the proffer. So again, I think, I think what you have before you is what's been proffered by the developer, and you can make a determination as to where you want to go from there. But having, having a precise number would be unusual at this stage.
David, we're talking fifty-six to sixty-five, that's nine feet difference. That's kind of unusual.
Don't disagree with you, Councilman Stewart. I'm just saying, his assertion that they can't get within inches to a foot or two is absolutely a reasonable assertion.
I agree.
Now, the delta between fifty-six and sixty-five becomes a policy question for you.
Thank you.
And again, I think the neighborhood's concern is a bait and switch that we, because if we get the zone changed, then it'll allow up to a seventy-five-foot building. And that, that's, that is not, that is not happening. That's not the intention. It's the stories. We've lobbed off the story, and we are going to stick with that. And as quote unquote, "the greedy developers," every inch of height we add is just cost to us. So, you know, we're not going to make hobbit caves, but our incentive is not to build as tall as we can build. Our incentive is to build the proposed building that we're talking about, and we are, our interests are completely aligned, where we don't want to build taller than we have to to get to accomplish what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. We'd like to invite Mr. Paul Evans, the Pleasant View Neighborhood Chair, to address the council.
What's shown here on this slide is the incredibly resilient, dynamic, and wonderful Pleasant View neighborhood. And I just want you to know that it's the entire neighborhood that we have University Avenue on one side to the west. We have nine hundred east that is kind of our boundary on the east. We have twenty-three twenty north and the Rock Canyon Elementary School and Sentinel Middle Schools as our northern boundary. And then, of course, we have University Parkway, which serves as our southern boundary. And it is true that there are several core, single-family residential neighborhoods. And I've marked here with a star the location of the proposed development, which there's been discussion between the neighborhood and Silverado since June of last year on how this is going to, June of this year, of how this is going to work. It was June when we first heard about the proposal. But I want you to focus on this core residential neighborhood here, shown in purple. This is the all-red subdivision. We have thirty-eight homes in there, and they represent a type of housing that is not present elsewhere in the neighborhood. You could think of them more as entry-level to mid-level homes. And, and so we're not talking about the impact on the residential neighborhood that is further to the east, but rather, we're, I'm focused on this issue of the all-red subdivision. And then right next to it, a planned community of townhomes and apartments and single-family homes that's across the street. It's this neighborhood here. It's that area of single-family homes and housing that represents the issue for which we're most concerned in the neighborhood. So shown in orange circles are the parcels that remain undeveloped. Most of them are owned by Brigham Young University, but there is a commercial zone property here. And of course, the rest are BYU properties. Those remain undeveloped and still waiting to see what's going to happen in that area. And what we're trying to protect is a connectivity between the homes in the area and a connectivity of the neighborhood. And if we begin to lop off with different types of developments than we already have or what's in the general plan, then we start to change the likelihood of being able to maintain these types of housing long-term. In the next slide, I guess I can control that, can't I? I just wanted to share with you the passage from the Provo City General Plan that deals with the Pleasant View neighborhood. And specifically, shown in the dark blue, are the types of higher-density housing that can continue to develop in the neighborhood that would be consistent with the long-term neighborhood plan. I would like to be able to say that we can tell you what the neighborhood is going to look like in twenty years because we have an idea of what's going to be there based on the general plan. In addition, the neighborhood's currently working with a BYU course to develop a neighborhood plan specifically for Pleasant View, and that will be coming your way sometime at the end of the year, beginning of next year. So I just point out that in the general plan, it says, we have higher-density residential housing. We have apartments. We have condos. We have eight-plexes. We have everything that there is, is present in the Pleasant View neighborhood, and we have the S and A overlays. So we provide a lot of housing opportunities for the city. Within that was the idea of how do we continue to grow and where growth is going to occur. And it says, look, there could be some more higher-density residential housing that occurs, and it should occur with, say, R-two, R-three, and R-four zones like we already have, and that these types of higher-density housing may occur in areas that are still yet to be developed. Now, in 2010, what were the existing zones upon which the general plan was based? And the answer is, in a short list, we had both the R-four and the R-five zone. And the R-four, as Dave Hunter mentioned, is a condominium complex, Tempanoga's Gateway Condominiums, which is across the street from the proposed development. It's a three-story development. It's about fifty-three, fifty-four feet tall in height. And you'll notice that in the R-four, the height is fifty-five feet in terms of what's imagined. Now, yes, it is true that there is an R-five zone in 2010, but we did not include that in the general plan because we didn't see that as the type of density that is consistent with the continued growth in the neighborhood. So since 2010, of course, we now have the campus mixed-use zone and the campus high-density residential zones. And, and the height on those are appreciably taller, seventy-five feet. So in June, when it was proposed, you know, for a seventy-foot-tall building, we just said, it's just not consistent with the general plan. That's not how the general plan states. And so if campus mixed-use zone is to be applied to this neighborhood, then we ought to have a general plan amendment and consider adding campus mixed-use as one of the zones to be used within the neighborhood. So, so this is where we are as a neighborhood. We've appreciated the dialogue with Silverado, with David Hunter, and Joe Brown, and Ken Harris, and, oh, I forgot, is it Jesse? Josh, I knew it started with a Josh, Harris, the up-and-coming Harris heir, I guess, is that what it makes you? So anyway, so the, and, and we, we thought we had the height of the building down to, and if we can go back to the drawing that shows the differential heights with the stadium and such. I just point out, the stadium is iconic. It's a one-off. Nobody's going to build more stadiums. So every time we get compared to, well, the stadium is there, we go, yes, we understand that, but there's not going to be more stadiums. There will be more high-density residential, there'll be more development that way. And so we're trying to stay focused on what is it that the neighborhoods continue to develop as. I think it was the one that showed the height differential between the stadium and the proposed development. There we go. So this is the design that was provided the night of the planning commission and on September eleventh. And there are two measurements here, topography. You'll see a topo height here and a topo height, oh, dang it, going the wrong way. There's topo heights here and here, there's topo heights here and here. And so where did the fifty-six feet come from that, when this was proffered for the planning commission for both consideration for general plan change as well as zoning change, as well as project plan, and we based it based on this drawing. So, okay, fifty-six feet. If you go back to the general plan, R-four says, hey, buildings fifty feet tall are fine within the R-four, the R-four what's been on the general plan, this is close enough. Plus, a foot of that is a really interesting decorative detail that's on the top of that corner anyway. It's not actually structural. So we said, okay, fifty-six feet is fine. So we're anxious, again, like we were at the planning commission, to have the real information in front of us as a neighborhood to consider. We haven't had a chance to review it and nor to circulate it around to the principals within the neighborhood. within the neighborhood, and we look forward to being able to read an amended, hopefully, development plan that we understand and can actually give you feedback on as we go forward. I just want to point out that the Planning Commission has, is not acting on the concept plan. They're making an approval for the project plan. And there's a difference in the requirements for detail between a concept plan and a project plan. And, you know, we're going straight to the project plan tomorrow night. Those are the details that we expect to see in a project plan, not this initial concept plan. So, we're concerned about those details, because everything is in the details in terms of what's gonna come out. So, any questions I can help you with?
Just a little, thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
So, the item, considering the change to the general plan from commercial to residential, requires a public hearing. And just by practice, we open all items up for public comment, which we treat very similarly to the public hearing. So, we'll open them up both together, both the proposal to change the general plan map designation, as well as the zone map classification from public facilities to campus mixed-use. If anyone here has comment for the council, you may come forward now.
Hi, my name is John Fenley. I think some of you up there probably recognize me. I live in this neighborhood, and I would like to tell you all that you need to take what Mr. Evans says with a grain of salt. The emails that I've gotten from him have been entirely one-sided propaganda against this project from the very beginning, telling people what to say in public meetings, and basically opposing this project at all costs. There are a few nosey, busybody people in this neighborhood that are nimbyists and oppose any development. I've lived in the neighborhood my entire life, and I used to be able to go down and get pizzas with my friends at Cougar Rentals down on Canyon Road. That was, that was nice. If I'm driving past this building, I'm not looking at the top of it. I'm not looking, "Oh, how tall is it? How tall is it?" Stadium's right there on this side, it doesn't matter how, you know, how big it is. I'm driving past, I'm looking at the bottom, you know? From far away, the topography of the skyline doesn't matter. I can see over the stadium from my house. Doesn't matter how tall this building is to me. But the development process is totally ridiculous in this city. Everybody seems to oppose development. That was what I was campaigning against when I was running for mayor, was this nimbyistic view of development. And I see it alive and well with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenley.
Hi, Rich Ziegler. I guess I'm technically a vice chair, but just a few, a few comments. I mean, yeah, I guess the process is quite, quite involved and laborious to make the changes, but it seems like we've, we've kind of had a lot of surprises, like today, the development agreement's the first time we've had any, any sort of indication that that was there. When, when the change was made from, from six floors to five floors, that was, I mean, we learned about that in this kind of venue, and so, that was quite a, quite a surprise. So, that, that kind of raises kind of some trust issues, I guess you could say. I mean, we've had some great meetings, and we've sat in an architectural review meeting, we went through a lot of details there, we came to a lot of consensus, and then, and then, surprise, tonight. So, you know, we kind of, kind of have some concerns with that, I guess is what we're trying to say. I mean, I guess there is issues of latitude, if there's a water issue, there's this, that, and the other, but, you know, what does that mean? You know, it kind of brings me back to a thought, since the last time we've, we've kind of discussed parking. I know we've kind of already hashed that out, we've got 1.5 parking spots per unit, and that's within the code, but a good friend of mine that lives in southeast Provo with some of the developments down there, she was just like, "Oh, my gosh, parking's a super-big issue, super-big issue." And one of the things that, that came out in, in the discussion was, you know, some sort of agreement, and in my mind, I'm trying to think of how this mechanics work, because, you know, the owner of the building can't really enforce, you know, where a public, a person publicly parks. I mean, they could park anywhere in the, in the neighborhood up to 72 hours, but the reality is, is if there's more cars than there are parking spots, you're gonna have rogue parking. I hate to rehash the issue, but on the other hand, if the building's built and it's an issue, then it's like the cat's out of the bag, and there's not really much any of us can do about it. So, that's just a, kind of a point to, to, to think about. But I, I guess getting back to the initial thing, the height, the whole issue of height really is super-sensitive and precedent in the neighborhood and where, where it goes. That's why it's there. So, you know, to see it all of a sudden show up on the list and is a development agreement of 125 units and 65 feet, it's like, oh, my goodness. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler.
My name's Sharon Memmott. I live just north of this project, and I have a few concerns with the project itself. Speaking to item four, I don't think most of the neighbors have a concern with changing the general plan to residential. The large concern comes from item five, changing this to campus mixed-use zone. I've attended the Planning Commission and, and listened to work session today. I appreciate that, my understanding was that the 56 number came from what the neighbors currently expected, because it's commercial, the zoning would only allow a 56-foot building. And so, that was kind of the way we came to that number compromise, was because, well, if zoning is not changed, then this is what we could end up with, is a building that's this high. And my understanding is that's where the number came from. It's a solid enough number that you've written in code, 55 feet, for more than four zones. The HDR that Mr. Evans pointed out, the R5 and the R4, I'll say 55 feet. So, it doesn't sound like an unreasonable number to expect a developer to come to. I appreciated listening to Mr. Harding mention that it would be kind of a fun spot for some commercial development on the bottom. I agree, after games and different events, that they might do well, actually, there. Again, my concern would be that if there's no commercial planned for this area, why are we going with the campus mixed-use, which has no limit on height? It has a 10-foot minimum setback, Mr. Winerton mentioned, and I didn't hear any mention in the development agreement about the 20-foot setback that we understood was coming, which would match the stadium terrace, terrace, stadium 180, whatever they're calling it this week, and, and the other projects that match and continue up that road. I'm concerned about the message that sends to future developers. If you give a campus mixed-use, which has no limits on height, 75, I'm sorry, 75 feet on height, no limit on density, which this would be 90 units per acre. And R5 and R4 all have limits of 44 units per acre. Mr. Harding asked me in a previous meeting to do my homework on, on another project, but what I haven't seen from staff is the homework here. I don't see that this fits in the neighborhood. We, we had a discussion about a project on 4800 North. The density in that project, which is obviously a collector arterial road in Provo, is only about 48 units per acre. It's a huge project on seven acres, and it's only 48 units per acre, if I remember correctly. It's nowhere near 90 per acre. And again, the ones that are contiguous to this property are nowhere near 90 units per And again, is this is considered an arterial road? It's closed tonight, but we're still calling it an arterial road in our city, but it's closed tonight for an event that's happening at the stadium. So, I don't, it can't really be considered that in our plans. Sorry, a couple, so I think that's everything. But my point is that you have several other options to zone this to, as opposed to CMU, the R5, R4. And one last question, if you continue this, if you don't change it to CMU tonight, is it even worth hearing at Planning Commission tomorrow? Would that be continued automatically, or how would that work? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Memmott. I should mention that Ms. Memmott is a, is a neighborhood chair.
Vice chair?
Vice chair. And so, we gave her a little more time. We would like to remind everyone that there's a two-minute limit on public comment.
Pam Jones, I am the other vice chair of Edgemont Neighborhood, which is very close to Pleasant View Neighborhood. I have supported a lot of different neighborhoods in the city. I support the city and its people. And the concept of urban sprawl has been mentioned tonight. Well, it can be, the sprawl can be both horizontal and vertical. These two neighborhoods, well, the neighborhoods around this development are basically predominantly single-family homes. I live a mile from the stadium, and on, when the weather's nice, I get football patron park cars in front of my house. And I don't know what's gonna ultimately happen with this development. If I had my druthers, BYU would have gotten it and built a parking structure. I don't like to see the precedent of tall buildings put into a single-family-type neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Any other comment from the public?
I'm Michael McKenzie, vice chair of the downtown neighborhood. I just want to say one thing, at least in downtown, we are very excited about more development, and I hate to see developments getting hung up on such small details. And I do think that there are concessions being made on either end, and I think that if you prevent buildings from being built in certain areas, it does cause problems in other areas. And adding a little bit of vertical density here and there will prevent horizontal sprawl. If you build up a little bit here, it'll present, prevent maybe two, three-story buildings being built in the future. Just some things to consider as we move forward. I think that giving a little bit of extra building height won't hurt that moving forward. And so, I just want to speak out in support of this development.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Any other comment? Seeing none, we will close both the public hearing for item number four and the public comment for item number five, and bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Van Buren.
Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding Mr. Stewart's desire in our work meeting to postpone. Are we gonna separate these now, or is his request for both of these items? Or, I'd just like a little clarification there, so...
Yeah, I think that, I think that's an excellent question. Let me go to Mr. Jones first and just play out some of the scenarios.
Let's talk procedurally and intent, I guess. So, my, my reading of the conversation in the, in the work meeting, and I invite Mr. Stewart to clarify, Councilor Stewart to clarify this in a moment, would be that that was specifically with regard to the rezone, since that is the item to which the development agreement applies, and the development agreement wouldn't apply to the general plan amendment. Having said that, the way our council rules operate is, the question is actually to be asked in this meeting, and there was not a motion made in the work meeting, so I, I understood the conversation in the earlier meeting to simply be Councilor Stewart expressing that he intended to ask for that continuance here, and that that still needs to formally happen.
Yes, thank you. But the one other question I have for you, there was a suggestion that if we do not move forward with the rezone, item five, is there a point in having the project plan heard tomorrow night? And I, I think I have a thought on that, but I'd love to hear your analysis or your thought.
My thought would be that that would be a decision for Planning Commission and planning staff to reach, and they're certainly, it'd certainly be within their purview to continue that item if they realize that the question may be not yet ripe, because the rezone has not happened.
And I guess, we could, we could talk from, from planning staff, but I guess I don't necessarily see a reason why a, a project plan couldn't be heard and even approved if the rezone hadn't taken place, but I definitely could be wrong on that. Thank you. All definitely perfect scenarios that could happen. In my mind, it would play out that the Planning Commission would hear this item. If they wanted to approve the item, it would be conditioned upon receiving a rezone. Otherwise, they, they haven't received an approval. Thank you. And so, before we go elsewhere, let me see if Mr. Stewart wanted to clarify, are you still wanting to request a continuation, and would it be for item four and five, or just item five?
Four and five.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that I would find it probably helpful and educational if it was heard by the Planning Commission, because they might ask specific questions like, "How high is it going to be?" And maybe they'll have an answer available, and then we can hear more specifics.
Thank you. So, back to, so with, with Mr. Stewart's request for continuation, both items are now continued to our next scheduled, regularly-scheduled meeting, which will be in three weeks from this evening. So, that's, that's done. And any other discussion on this? Let me then, while you're thinking about, if there's any other discussion, let me just throw out to, to both the neighborhood and the applicant. It, it sounds to me that there may be, and I don't, I'm not certain all the concerns of the neighborhood, but it, it sounds to me, I think what makes me the most nervous is, there have been instances in the past where the council has approved a rezone based on a proposal, but without a development agreement. And even though the developer at the time had the full intent to, to, to build what they were proposing, things changed, the property changed hands, and what was built was very different than what had been proposed and contemplated at the time of the rezone. And so, so I am sympathetic to the desire of the neighborhood to have a development agreement that says, you know, "We're approving a zone that's larger than what's being contemplated, so let's, if we can have a development agreement to kind of show the intent of, this is actually what we're intending to, to build." If that's the case, I do think... Let me finish this for just a moment, but if, if that's the intent, might I suggest look at, look at proffering something that, that lists the number of stories and not necessarily, you know, maybe have it at the cap of, of a height, but focus mostly on the number of stories, and if, if the neighborhood takes a look at that, and that may be a way to, to resolve that. Is there, is there any other discussion? If not, is there any objection to me inviting the applicant back up to respond to my comment? I don't see any objections, so yes, please come.
We are totally 100% on board in signing the development agreement with specifying units and stories. And again, the alignment is, we are aligned with the city. We don't want to go, you know, if we're capped at stories, we're not going to go build a taller building than we have to. And we know very good, within a percentage, of how tall the building's going to be. And, you know, but we are willing to say, this is the stories, we're capping out this, and we're capping it out on this many units. We're, we're ready, we're willing to go on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
And that was Mr. Harding's opinion and stories. I think Mr. Stewart would have a different opinion with regard to the height. I think that would, and, and we do understand the difference.
And I think in the height, we can get it really, really close.
That's, that's great. Put that in your development agreement.
And with that being said, when they, when they talk about the zone change, if it's, in the general plan, it's commercial and you can go up to 75 feet in commercial, this is going, I mean, this is, this is significantly less than that. And we're willing to sign it and do it, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Saul.
Just a suggestion, I think the draft development agreement that we heard mentioned 65 feet, but I heard tonight, the developers seemed to be proffering 56 to 60. So I don't know if it would help the neighborhood's concerns if the figure of 60 was used. Just a thought.
It's a policy, it was not a bait and switch, it was just the last. I mean, that's less than 10%, plus or minus in the margin. And it was just something to be.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but we need to have comments at the microphone. But I think, I think you've, I think you've already said what you're saying now. So I think we understand.
Any, any other comment or discussion among the council? Okay, seeing none, these items are continued for three weeks and we will revisit them then. Continuing on to item six, this is an implied motion on an ordinance to amend Provo City Code regarding accessory apartments. And this has citywide application. This is, this will be presented by Mr. Brian Jones, our city council attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not, is an item that has been under discussion by the council for quite some months, arising out of some of the council committees. Originally, a proposal to, in fact, I'm hesitant to even try to describe what it's intended to do because it's been described so many times, I don't want to contradict any of the previous discussions about it. But, yeah, and we had it just in our last work session. And at that point, we were reporting back from, I believe it was the Policy Governance Committee? It went to, we referred it back to one of the committees, and now I don't remember which committee it was. Anyway, we referred it back to one of the committees. Last work session, last work meeting, we reported back from the committee and reported on some compromises regarding minimum square footage sizes in the S overlay when more than two, more than two additional persons were going to be allowed in and so, and some discussion on parking. We reported back the committee's recommendations on all of those. Tonight, what is before you is the actual ordinance that makes those changes. I will mention a couple of updates since last work, work meeting, rather than going into everything the ordinance does and then kind of, and then hopefully just answer questions. But if you're looking really closely, a couple of changes are that there was still an archaic reference to the Community Development Department. It's been changed to the Community and Neighborhood Services Department. There was, in the last draft, a, an amendment to the consolidated fee schedule, which we've since removed, recognizing that there was already a line item in the consolidated fee schedule for applications to that department that has the proper fee in it. So those two changes have been made. And then the other thing that I'll, I'll comment on is there is an alternative version that has been prepared that could be substituted for the standard version by motion during tonight's discussion. That was prepared in response to questions and comments by principally Councilor Harding, but that were also raised in the last committee meeting. And that centers around the fact that the last version of this ordinance that we had, in addition, it defined what an accessory apartment was and then defined as an alternative term to that, accessory dwelling unit. And as I commented to Councilor Harding, Harding earlier today, I believe that was, that was intended by Community and Neighborhood Services as a code cleanup because in the R2 and, and R3 and R4 zones, there were already references to accessory dwelling units. The confusion arises because there is also a term that appears throughout our entire code regarding a dwelling unit. And so, and a dwelling unit is defined in a way that is almost contradictory to the way we then defined what an accessory dwelling unit was. So after consulting with Community and Neighborhood Services over the past couple of days, we've prepared an alternative version that deletes throughout the entire amendment the term accessory dwelling unit and replaces it with the term accessory living space, which would apply both to internal accessory apartments and the newly allowed, or proposed to be newly allowed detached accessory apartments. So like I said, both versions have the changes, the technical changes about the consolidated fee schedule and the name of the department. If you want to go with the version that uses the phrase accessory living space, then that would require a motion to substitute that as the, as the proper exhibit. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Questions for Mr. Jones?
So let's go over the compromise that we worked with the neighborhood versus, where if it, we have the A overlay at one level of occupancy, and then we have the S, which goes beyond that. Instead of a family or two singles, it's a family or three or four. And so if you want the three or four, at one time, it was going to be a conditional use, but we're really trying to get away from conditional uses. We just need to spell it out crystal clear, what is wanted, what is needed. And so we did that and made it so that if you actually wanted the three occupancy or the four occupancy, that the rules were a little bit different, that you had some further restrictions or things to comply with because of the concerns of the neighborhood.
Yes, so that is now found in, let me switch over to the, sorry, to the other version so that I'm giving you the right line numbers. So down at, starting at line 424, we provide, rather than a conditional use permit, we now provide that you may have a designation on your rental dwelling license that allows for additional occupancy only in the S overlay zone, not in the A. And that that additional occupancy designation on the, on the RDL may allow up to four unrelated, related or unrelated adults. In order to get that designation on the license, you must have the minimum parking required by the code and in addition, sufficient off-street parking spaces for all the vehicles that are being maintained on the, on the property. Additionally, and that was in there before, the two compromise provisions that have been added since the last time this came before you is that the accessory unit may not be located on the ground floor of the associated one-family dwelling. And second, that the owner of the one-family dwelling may not reside in the accessory unit. They have to reside in the main unit.
Okay, yeah, and that's only in those specific instances with three or four, which meets the concerns of the neighborhood based on their experience and what they wanted to kind of forestall or prevent what they thought would be problems in the future.
Right, so if you're in the A overlay or if you're in the S overlay but don't care about having the additional occupancy, then those requirements wouldn't apply.
I wanted to make a comment and just, so let me first make a general comment and then I just noticed something that I wanted to get your opinion on. Just for, probably not for the council, but for the few that are still in attendance, I would say that the two biggest changes that this is, that this is accomplishing is this will allow detached accessory apartments for the first time in Provo. Previous to this, accessory apartments needed to be attached to the main home. This allows detached accessories. And then the other thing, the other main thing that this does is this now requires rental dwelling licenses for operating accessory apartments. Previously, duplexes, apartment buildings needed to have rental dwelling licenses, but accessory apartments did not. And so this will bring inspections every three years. This will, this gives a higher level of control and accountability for those operating a business of, of renting residential space. So I think that's, that's two main things that this is accomplishing. And I think also streamlines a lot of, a lot of this and makes, will make it easier to understand, easier to comply with, and easier to administer on the city side. And then for Mr. Jones, I noticed at the end of what you just explained, so part three, the owner of the one-family dwelling does not reside in the accessory unit. Thoughts on that being accessory unit rather than accessory living space or accessory dwelling?
Well, this particular, this is the version that doesn't have the changed language. However, I think you've, in the version that does have the changed language, it probably isn't changed there because I went through and looked for accessory dwelling unit. And since that occurrence doesn't have the word dwelling in it, I probably didn't capture it. But it, but I, I don't know that it makes a significant amount of difference, but for uniformity and consistency, it'd probably be better. Bryce, since we haven't substituted it yet anyway, if you're, now that you've pulled up the living space one, if you could change accessory unit at line 438 and 440 to accessory living space, then that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other questions for Mr. Jones from the council?
I just wanted to say that another function of, of having an RDL is it will hopefully help guarantee that the units are owner-occupied. That has been a real bone of contention where at least one neighborhood said, we don't want it anymore because there's just so many that become just duplexes. So, you know, with privilege comes responsibility and accountability. And all too often, if we don't hold people accountable, things get out of hand.
Any other comments or questions? We will now open this item for public comment and invite any in attendance who would like to speak to this to come forward at this time.
Good evening, my name is Steve Christensen from Provo, and I'm not here to lead us in another rendition of Happy Birthday, but that is coming up soon. I'm in favor of this zoning change. The fabric of our community, I don't think, is enhanced necessarily by a few builders and developers and owners. This spreads it out, the financial benefit to a number of people now instead of just a few. And the, looking forward, I would encourage the Planning Commission as well as the council to think broader. I have two concerns. One is the parking. It seems to me that transportation is driving housing right now because of the corridor nature of our public transit system. We're getting a lot of building in this, in this area. That's about to change. And I would encourage the Planning Commission and the council to be aware of the technology and resources that are coming so that housing can drive transportation. When we move from a corridor approach to a point-to-point approach, we should be able to expand that, which will alleviate the parking issues. So thinking ahead, consider some leeway in the parking, perhaps something like, similar to a carbon tax, but for parking and public transit. The second concern, it's a small one, but the 1,200-square-foot minimum for the main house, there are a lot of properties that have smaller houses but bigger yards that would be excellent for the detached units. And it would benefit those landowners as well. Perhaps in that 900 to 1,200-square-foot range for the main unit, it could be a discretionary option for the, the Planning Commission on a case-by-case basis. We don't want the cart driving the horse, but those are some issues. But thank you for pushing forward on this, this zoning change.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. And if I may just respond to that, we received some feedback about that main, main area, minimum space, minimum square footage. And so, and so we have already said that that's only for attached accessories. Detached accessories are not, do not have that limit, so. Do not have the minimum size, so detached can still be added to a smaller home. Any other public comment?
Paul Evans, Chair for the Pleasantview Neighborhood, in which we soon will have 99% of the single-family homes as being zoned for these accessory dwelling units once this zone change occurs. And hopefully, the council will resurrect pending request for a change in the S overlay for, it's about 30 homes in the Pleasantview Neighborhood. We've, we've been waiting for that to be taken care of. So the, this is a great change. It's nice to get it combined into one entity. We look forward to having that, particularly the rental dwelling licenses, which will help in the enforcement issue. Just to remind you that we invited Community Development to come and tour eight different homes that had accessory dwelling units in them, have them tour those and inspect those as if they were doing a rental dwelling license inspection. And in every case, it was totally reasonable and, and it was helpful in terms of what happened. So the concerns that we had about some hidden burden for individuals at least was largely unmet or seen, not seen in the neighborhood. I can't speak for elsewhere in the city where accessory dwelling units will be permitted, particularly under the RC zone, and what conditions those may be in going forward. So, but we do totally appreciate the gleaming promises of the future. But we still have to deal with the realities of today in terms of what the impacts will be. Yes, we hope for change and technology as they go forward. Particularly, we hope for continued enforcement by Provo City with regards to when these comp, accessory dwelling units are not correctly utilized as allowed under ordinance. That has been the constant issue, at least for our neighborhood, for the past 15 years. And all we have to do is hold out south of campus and then the tree streets as examples of what happened when things tilted just a little bit too far. And we've always used those as examples of what not to turn into. So please, as we go forward, I know that Wayne's here, will, will need to have real enforcement. There are some issues that I know in the neighborhood have been open now for two years. And they remain open as, as an accessory dwelling unit violation problem. So, but we'll wait and we'll eventually get those taken care of. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Any questions I can help you with?
Sharon Memmott, I haven't had a chance to read this ordinance, but I am concerned as we anticipate the S and A possibly moving into our neighborhood because it did mention that it was a citywide issue, even though we're only talking about S and A overlay. I appreciate Mr. Connect's comments about the owner occupied situation because I know I differ with others in the neighbor, in my own neighborhood about whether this should be allowed or not. And I'm kind of okay with it, owner occupied. But I haven't lived in the tree streets and other places where it's happened and seen what happens. We only have a few abuses that are happening in ours to see that. And, and I respectfully disagree about the parking. I appreciate, as I understand it, parking is written so that there has to be a space for every automobile that's registered, I guess, at that property. And that seems, seems adequate to me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just make one more comment. This is the second time in a month and a half that the outside doors for the building have been locked, and people can't get in. So certainly, it's a custodial issue where they're just locking doors and then you can't get in, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Namely, the chair from the pathetic tree streets, right? So, I'm David Atchison, and I'm the Chair for the Wasatch Neighborhood. So, thank you for your work in, in trying to keep the system going and trying to make adjustments. I appreciate the fact that we took into account the main level living, and that's important. And I would say that the number one thing, Mr. Parker, that we can do is enforcement. And that's been, as, as Paul was saying, that has been an ongoing challenge. It will be an ongoing challenge. My encouragement to this legislative body would be to do what you can legislatively to assure that there is the means for, for enforcement and to, to hold the administration accountable for enforcement. If we don't have enforcement of, we can change all kinds of rules, and I've been saying this for a long time, which is what we really need is enforcement. We have enough ordinances on the books. We're cleaning some up, right? This is an effort this evening to clean some up. But it's all useless without enforcement. So, but thank you for your very hard work, Councilmember Harding and I. He was, you were very kind, right, in spending a lot of time with me on the phone and talking through issues and, and being, not just accommodating, but in really helping me to understand your point of view and, and having a great point of view. So, and thank you, Dave, for your good work and each member of the council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I mention enforcement?
And we do, we do appreciate public input. It helps us craft better laws.
The locked doors, the locked doors were part of the enforcement, but apparently that didn't work.
Do we know if that's been resolved for tonight at least? Are those doors open now?
They're still locked.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any, any other public comment?
Does that make this a closed-door meeting?
A locked-door meeting, yeah.
I just have a quick comment. My name is Matt Staker. I live in Grandview. And we'd like to see this ordinance changed just because we don't want our kids in our house anymore. We want to put them out. But in, in reality, we'd like, our situation's a little unique because we have a house in the end of a cul-de-sac, and it's got two lots, and we built a house on one lot. We don't want to build a house on our other lot. We, you know, we'd love our yard, want to keep our yard over there. Where we want to build is, what we want to do is build a detached garage at the end of the driveway. Have, have two-car garage with, 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 you know, units up above, you know, probably about 1,200 or 1,300 feet up above. And we'd love to do it legally and not go behind backs or, you know, make neighbors mad. So we just, we'd love to see this thing pass so we can do this. And in, in all seriousness, we would love to, to have our kids, you know, maybe get married and have an affordable housing to live in while they are, are going to school and getting, getting, you know, ready to take on life. So, love to see it happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Staker. Let me comment that, that what you just described is, I think, kind of the, the vision of why we think these accessory apartments can be very valuable in areas of the city. If this changes, this only applies to areas that already have the A and the S overlay. And I believe if you live in Grandview, you, you are not under one of these overlays. So even if this passes tonight, what you just talked about is not legal yet. You would need to get together with your neighborhood and, and petition the council to apply an A or, an A or S, it would probably be an A, an A overlay for your area. And you can reach out to me afterwards if you have any questions about that. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comment for item six and bring it back to the council for any discussion. Mr. Handley?
Yeah, I, I, about the question, ever-important question of enforcement that both Paul Evans and Dave Atchison brought up, I really am encouraged by what we've learned from the use of the RDLs thus far, that it seems to, I mean, I don't know if I'm recalling something that Carrie Walls or other staff members have said. I'm not sure that we've seen specific statistics, but that there does seem to be more compliant, voluntary compliance as a result of the RDL, which frankly is, is cheaper than enforcement and, and maybe even preferable. Sort of like the same idea with medicine, that it's better to prevent rather than to cure. That's not to say that we shouldn't, I echo, I certainly support what they were saying about the importance of enforcement, but I, I think it's important that we recognize that the, this, this additional requirement of the RDL and the inspection associated with it, that Paul was describing, I think is going to go a long way in sort of normalizing, standardizing the expectations so that there is much more compliance over the long term and maybe less of a need for, for enforcement. That's, of course, the ideal here, and hopefully that has that effect. But I'm grateful that, I'm gratified to have seen thus far some success with the use of the RDL in, in rentals elsewhere that, that seems to be bringing people in line.
Thank you, Mr. Handley.
How long have we had the RDL? When did we, was it last year or the year before that we put that in?
So. There's a difference.
Yeah, so I, so I believe what Ms. Walls was, was talking about was the disclosure and acknowledgement.
Disclosure. When did we put that disclosure in? That's what I'm interested. Two, has it been almost two years?
Year and a half, yeah, two years. Yeah.
And that's in addition to the RDL, which has been around since about 2003 or '04. But it, it goes hand in hand. And, and so it's, it's the acknowledgement and disclosure where people are told what the legal use of the property is so that both parties, the landlord and the tenant, are on the same page and hopefully there's fewer surprises.
I would look for a motion to substitute the updated language to be for the implied motion.
I don't have any more chance, so I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Seconded by Mr. Van Buren. So right now, the vote is whether the, the alternate language becomes what we're considering. So, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, so any discussion on the new language that we're considering? Mr. Sewell?
Just wanted to thank the Housing Committee and all the various stakeholders that they involved in this process for a lot of good work on this, I think.
Thank you. And also, yeah, with that, Mr. Jones has done a, a lot of the heavy lifting on this, and we appreciate his expert guidance.
Just one comment, since four of us won't be here next year, I, I hope you continue the tradition of a housing committee. A lot of good people on there that have great perspectives, including Robert Vernon, you know, different stakeholders. But it also is a venue where we can talk about changes to our code. And some of them are cleanups that still need to happen. I mean, there's things in there that people just haven't had time to get around to. And, and staff doesn't always have time, and they sometimes are even reluctant to spend the time on something that may not pan out. And so, working with staff to identify things that would be helpful, like the, this combining of the A and S overlay, and then it just kind of blossomed from there. And we kind of revisited the whole concept of accessory apartments and detached apartments. So I, I think it's just, it's a really great opportunity to work with the administration, with our stakeholders, and that includes vetting things often with realtors and home builders so that we can have ordinances that are up to date, forward-thinking, and, and. So I, I just encourage the, the new council to continue that tradition and work with staff and the public. Like, like you can see tonight, the neighborhoods play a very important part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. Any other comments on this? Call for a vote on the implied motion regarding the accessory apartments. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item seven is an ordinance to amend Provo City Code to place.
Mr. Hardy, I'm sorry. I see Brian get up and leave. Community Development, I appreciate you two on this. That was a lot of effort to go forward on this, as I see Brian getting up and leaving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winterton. We appreciate the, the staff members of Community and Neighborhood Services Department. All right, so, item seven is an ordinance to amend Provo City Code to place over occupancy on the list of nuisances. This will be presented by Mr. Brian Jones, Council Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. This one, unlike the 27 pages of amendments that you just passed, this is a one-line change. In title, in section 7.01.020, there's a list of those things that constitute a nuisance within the city and that may be abated or, or pursued for enforcement under city code. And the proposal here is to add to that list the statement, "Occupancy of any dwelling in excess of the permissible occupancy limits." This merits maybe just a little bit of background, some of which, all of which you probably heard last time in, in work meeting, but just for the benefit of the public. Couple of years ago, the council defined code enforcement, or zoning compliance, rather, to be one of their top priorities, and spent quite a bit of time coming up with a zoning compliance strategic plan. As part of coming up with that strategic plan, both code enforcement and legal staff were tasked with coming up with just a list of tools that they could suggest for the council to enact in order to, to work on zoning compliance enforcement. One of those was identified by one of the Assistant City Attorneys, Marcus Draper, which, and he identified it when he was researching other cities' codes regarding over occupancy and noticed that over occupancy was listed in the Springville Code as, as a nuisance. And that was added to the strategic plan and, and then kind of set to the side while we worked a lot on the acknowledgement and disclosure that we just talked about a few minutes ago. Working through the list, it's now come back to the council. The intent of this is, this is, this is another tool, another tool in the tool chest, designed primarily to be used against repeat offending landlords based on the resources that it would take and, and the procedures that would be followed in trying to take a nuisance action for over occupancy against a tenant. That wouldn't really be feasible, and so that's not the intent here. But the intent is that in, because we have other tools for that. But this is a tool that would allow us, in certain situations, where we have a landlord who is repeatedly engaging in over occupancy with their rental and who seems to be operating under the methodology that we've talked about several times of thinking that the, the occasional fine, occasionally getting caught, is just the normal cost of business. This would allow a civil rather than a criminal action for nuisance, which would allow some differences in what the standard of proof is. It would allow for some, perhaps a civil injunction against them and joining them as a court order to, to abide by the law regarding occupancy and, and to impose some damages that would be in excess of what the, the criminal fines were because of the, what state law is regarding criminal fines in zoning compliance cases. So, that's the proposal here, is just to add this to the list. I think I mentioned in work meeting last time, I think the enforcement staff pretty much generally agree that it would probably very rarely be used, but it would be a tool that could potentially be used in, in one of those low-percentage, really, really tough cases that the other tools just aren't working for.
With, with that description, does this ordinance then attack or label the tenants? Or is it just labeling the landlord?
Well, it doesn't label either. What it does is it says that occupancy of any dwelling in excess of the permissible occupancy limits is a nuisance. But insofar as the tenants go, the nuisance abatement procedures in the code require providing notice that, that you believe the, the nuisance exists and an opportunity to abate the nuisance before you can even pursue any other options. So, to the extent that it was ever going to be used against a tenant, the only thing that would happen, I would assume, in 99% of the cases is city would provide notice and the tenant would move out, and that would be the end of it, right? There, there wouldn't be anything else to pursue. Unlike a criminal violation where the mere fact of violating the law subjects you to the penalties afterwards, this only, this procedure only subject, subjects you to being forced to abate the nuisance, i.e. to move out. Does that make sense?
That, but that's, that sounds to me like it ends up hurting the tenant and not the landlord. I mean, if the tenant's the one who has to move out at, at urgent notice, that could be quite traumatic. Whereas if the violation is persistent and it's on the part of the landlord who's not communicating to the tenants and is taking advantage of this opportunity, then, then the landlord just continually can let these tenants get rolled over. But, related question that I have is, is, I mean, I've, I've just had a hard time understanding how this actually works. I mean, it, by virtue of declaring it a public nuisance, does this mean that it has more teeth for a neighbor to call in a neighbor, for example? I mean, who, who's doing the reporting if it's not, if it's not people in the neighborhood, correct?
Right, right.
And wouldn't they be able to report violations of code anyway? So I'm just wondering, like, what, what does it do to be able to say, "Oh, and by the way, this is a public nuisance"?
Nothing.
So why is it a tool?
So let me, well, let me walk through. When I say nothing, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything for the neighbor to say it's a nuisance. What changes is how this is, if the city decides to use this tool, which doesn't have anything to do with whether the neighbor thinks it's a nuisance or not. So let me, so let me walk through how it would play out. So first of all, let me back up and say, I, I get the confusion about your comments about what I was saying to Mr. Winterton. What I was trying to point out to Mr. Winterton was why, was how it would impact a, a tenant, because his question was, can it only be used against the landlord? And from a technical perspective, no. But in answer, but my answer to your question is, but we wouldn't use it against a tenant because it doesn't really serve any purpose. And, and it's not our most effective tool against a tenant, right? So, so let me walk through how, how it actually works. So, in a typical case, what would happen is the neighbor would call up the city and say, "I think that there's an over occupancy in the apartment, in the house next door. I think they've got." I think they've got eight people in there, you know, renting all the bedrooms out. And I, and it's causing a really big problem for the neighborhood, and there's no parking, and there are, and there's all these reasons why we want this over occupancy enforced." Well, so if code enforcement is going to go out and they're going to do an investigation, they're going to try to identify whether or not they think that there really, there really are too many occupants, which for all the reasons we've talked about in a whole number of meetings before is actually a fairly hard endeavor for them, from an investigative standpoint. And particularly hard if what, if what usually happens, happens, which is that the neighbor says, "Oh, and don't tell them that I said anything." Or, which, we wouldn't anyway, because the city keeps those complaints anonymous. So I guess I phrased that poorly. What I really mean to say is that, a lot of times, we get the neighbors who say, not only do they want to remain anonymous during the investigation, which we would do anyway, but when we have trouble finding the proof, they say, "And I don't want to testify. If you end up prosecuting them, you need to find other evidence besides me that it's happening because I don't want to be on the witness stand testifying that it happened," right? Which just adds to the, to the problem of trying to find the evidence for the investigation. So, as you already pointed out, a few minutes ago when we talked about the acknowledgement and disclosure, we now have a really good tool for actually seeking enforcement against tenants and landlords, which is to seek enforcement of the acknowledgement and disclosure rules. So that's probably actually the first step, because that's much easier to prove and a much easier tool to use for all the reasons that we discussed when that was put into place. But let's say for some reason that's not, and so that, and that's why I say, we're never going to go down the nuisance route because, for a tenant, because the nuisance route involves a whole bunch of steps and is much more cumbersome than to just go look for the acknowledgement and disclosure route, or to actually even just try to, try to enforce the occupancy limit itself as a criminal matter. So the tool here is, if, let's say that we've got a different situation, where we've got a landlord who is repeatedly, over and over and over and over again violating this, that every time we go in and enforce, they kick the tenants out for, the tenants leave because they're being enforced against, or we enforce against the landlord, and he kicks the tenants out for a couple of months. And as soon as the furor dies down, he brings them back in, them or others, right? And it's just continually happening, happening all the time. I can't speak to whether this is true or not. Anecdotally, there has been a lot of discussion among the council and the code enforcement officials that there is a belief that there are landlords out there who believe that paying those fines is part of the cost of doing business, and they'd rather get dinged two or three times a year for a $750 fine and just keep over, just keep over occupying the property than come into compliance. In those rare instances, and the very low percentage of the cases, this would give us an opportunity to go and seek civil damages against the landlord in an amount that exceeds that criminal fine. That's the principal use of the tool.
So is there any, that's very helpful. I didn't quite have that clear of a picture of this, so thank you. One of my lingering, I mean, this is, this is one of these problems that's thorny either way you look at it. I mean, I, I recognize that if it weren't for neighbors who call in and report violations, in many cases, they would never get addressed, right? And in fact, sometimes even then, it doesn't get addressed, but they, they feel, they feel like they're surrounded by violations. I just got several emails this week regarding a related kind of problem in a different neighborhood. On the other hand, I've also received phone calls and tearful messages saying, "My neighbors just turned me in for something that they didn't have the courage to come and tell me that they were bothered by," you know? And, and so I don't like anything that sort of creates a culture of hiding and, you know, sort of makes it possible to be more divisive, I guess, without just sort of honest confrontation about conflict. And so my gut reaction to this was, this felt like something that would give license to, you know, more anonymous phone calls. Now granted, you've clarified that the, the only issue is whether or not they're willing to testify, and I think you had explained that once before. In your judgment, is this, is this calling it, I mean, is, calling it a public nuisance has a certain sort of symbolic weight in, in public language that I think is somewhat causing some anxiety. And I want to be giving our code enforcers more tools, but I don't want to be creating a culture of divisiveness and, and encouraging unnecessary conflict that could be resolved in other ways. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, so my, my gut reaction was a little worried about that. That's all I'm trying to say.
I think I understand your concern, and I, my guess is that, once this is passed, that members of the public will never actually look at it again. It's not intended to be a public-facing solution. This is intended to provide an additional legal tool for the legal staff to say, "This didn't work, this didn't work, this didn't work, so now we're going to try a public nuisance action," right? Yeah, it really, in my view, isn't intended to have any impact on the public at all. Now, having said that, there's, I'm going to come back to that in a second and talk about the private right of action, which is something that you at least should be aware of as you consider this. But as far as the divisiveness of it, if you look at the list, right, I mean, this is just, what's already in the list is any condition that causes visual blight, something that, anything that, any condition that impairs the reasonable use of the property, any fire hazard, emanation of noxious or unreasonable odors, noxious weeds, keeping refuse or waste matter on the property, polluted or stagnant waters, accumulation of debris or plant trimmings on the, I mean, we're not, we're not suddenly adding this to a list of things that, the only other things on the list are rape and murder, right? It's, it's a list of, these are things that you shouldn't be doing with your property because they affect your neighbors, right? And, and the idea is to just add this to that list so that it can be, so that that tool can be used. Now, this was mentioned in the last meeting, and I just want to bring it up to make sure that all the councils are aware of it, that by adding something to the public nuisance list, it creates not only a cause of action for the city to pursue, it does create a private right of action for any citizen to pursue against any other citizen. So, it's possible that if there were an over occupancy situation, that a neighbor was so sick of that they couldn't handle it anymore because they felt like the city wasn't enforcing, or wasn't adequately taking care of it, for whatever reason, either lack of resources or lack of proof, whatever, the citizen could actually go file a civil lawsuit against the neighbor for the public nuisance over occupancy. Now, the likelihood of that happening, I think, is very rare. In, in the 11-plus, 12-plus years that I've been with the city, every single time that neighbors have been upset about something, about one of these things that's already in the list and wanting the city to enforce, we've advised, when, when it's been cases that we couldn't do anything about, or that our method of resolving it was going to take months, if not years, we've advised them of this right, and nobody's ever taken us up on it. Because it's going to require $600 to $1,000 in filing fees with the court, it's probably not something you're going to win without hiring your attorney to take care of it. Even if you get in there and file the lawsuit, you're going to have to prove, you're going to have to prove the nuisance, you're going to have to prove the damages in order to actually have a judge do anything about it. So, I mean, I haven't looked at the, at the Fourth District Court caseload to see if there's any public nuisance, when the last time a public nuisance lawsuit was filed by a neighbor against a neighbor, but it does at least theoretically give that right. Now, Mr. Connect, in a conversation I had with him, correctly pointed out that, under common law, under common law nuisance law, you can actually already do that. It's just harder because you have to prove to the judge exactly how the over occupancy is, is a nuisance to you. Whereas adding it to the list means that it is now per se a nuisance. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Could we, is it possible, I do, I would really like to see this as a tool to go for landlords that are abusive, but not necessarily the tenants. Is there, is there wording that can be put in there to explain that it, it is a landlord issue who is creating the problem? We've already got the tool for the, for the tenant, like you said, with the disclosure. Can we put it in just for the landlord?
What if it said, "Over occupancy by landlords," or, I don't know if there's-
Well, my, my concern, I guess, is I think that that, I guess I would say, if that's a, if that's a serious concern, we probably ought to go back, take it back to legal office and spend some time debating it and massaging it. Because my concern is that by saying that, you are undermining the legal claim that it is a nuisance. Because if it's only a nuisance if the landlord does it, not if the tenants do it, then what's the nuisance? How can you be damaged only by something that the landlord does and not something that the tenants do? So, so I have some concerns about whether or not we can arrive at that result. And the only thing I can tell you is just to kind of reiterate the assurance that, from a legal standpoint, it doesn't make any sense to me that this would be the tool we would use.
That's right. I agree with that, but it's the message that I'm concerned about.
So, I think you made, you draw, make a good point there, Brian, because sometimes we see situations where the landlord says, "Well, I had no idea that was happening. That's somebody's subletting," or whatever, "It's not, it's not me." Long time ago, I took a trip to Houston for a conference. It was a NUSA conference, and they had different breakout sessions, and one was all about how they deal with land use, which is very interesting there because they don't have zoning by and large, except in one little pocket in the middle of town, and that's a story unto itself. But generally speaking, it's, it's kind of, you know, like, people think of it as the wild, wild west, and everyone does whatever they want, except the way they handle and keep order is when something gets out of line, when there's an abuse, what we would consider abuse of zoning, they handle it by enforcing nuisance laws. And that's how they maintain order without zoning, is through nuisance laws. And so I, I think it's important to note that we are responding here to Marcus, we are responding to the troops in the trenches who say, "Hey, I need an extra tool for the tough nuts." And, you know, he's an attorney, he makes his case before a judge, and if this is a tool that he wants, that's going to be used on those 10 landlords that are on the list, the perennial list, then I want to give it to them.
And let me just add to that, that, remember, by doing this, you're not outlining something that is, you're not outlining something new, right? It's already against the law to overoccupy the property. So the only thing you're doing is adding an additional legal remedy. And so, the thought that I had as I was listening to those last two comments is, remember, as we've expressed in other meetings, that in 97%, 95, 97% of all code enforcement efforts, no legal remedies are ever pursued. The most effective method, our most effective tool is the threat, not, not the actual legal remedy, in the sense that, 95, 97% of the time, what happens is that code enforcement gets the complaint, starts an investigation, and A, either the investigation triggers a sudden coming into compliance, or the notice of violation that comes from code enforcement after they conclude their investigation results in compliance, or the letter that comes from the legal department after the notice of violation has been forwarded to us results in compliance. It's only a really rare handful of cases that we actually get to using the legal remedy, and that same principle would apply to this remedy.
Mr. Stewart?
And if someone's concerned about the message, have a refer to our notes from this meeting and read your stuff.
Yes, sir.
They will know that the message is that it's only against landlords where they're stringent and not willing to ever obey the law.
I'd like to make a couple of comments here. On that list of potential tools and things we might pursue for increasing zoning compliance, I believe there is an item that looks at making landlords financially responsible for tenants that are forced to move out mid-contract or whatever. And I'm not sure exactly how that looks, but, but the idea is if a landlord's aware of an over occupancy, and then because of enforcement, people have to move suddenly, as you talked about, the landlord becomes responsible to pay for those moving expenses. And so that is a way to make sure that the burden is not unfairly landing on, on the tenants and not the landlord. So that, that's another tool that I believe is on the list, but we have not yet gotten to, but that is something that, that the next council might want to take a look at. The second thing, I appreciate the comments that have, we've had so far about messaging. I do, anytime I think we, we step into this notoriously thorny issue, there, there are some that feel that, you know, anytime we address this, that it's, it's because, you know, we are against tenants, or we're against, you know, one demographic or another. And I do think that it is worthwhile stating the intent and the reason that we're doing this, and it's, it's to achieve compliance to, to these zoning rules, and that we, we value all the residents, all the residents of Provo, and we want to be welcoming, and we want everyone to have a place here. We just need to, to make sure that we're following the law on that. So, and I did not do a very good job on that, but I do think that it's, it's important that that message get across, that this is not, you know, anti-anyone. It's just pro-following zoning laws.
Just a short follow-up. So Brian, if someone, if I was a judge and someone came in and said that this landlord was obviously guilty of over occupancy, and it was a civil, rather than a criminal situation, and said to the judge, "Because a certain number of these tenants are having to move out, we want as part of the damages against the landlord that he pay them a certain amount." Would that be possible?
My guess is that the judge wouldn't respond favorably to that complaint being made by the neighbors themselves, but the tenants could probably join into the lawsuit and ask for that.
So this could actually empower tenants to get redress against the landlord that had basically, if they were, you know, feeling like they were a victim, that they were misinformed and that they had cause against the landlord?
I don't know the answer to that for certain off the top of my head, but it seems at least reasonably possible that it would allow such a tenant to pursue a small claims action for the damages they suffered as a result of the landlord breaking the law.
Okay. Any, any other comments or discussion among the council before we open this up for public comment? Okay. So we will now open item seven for public comment. If anyone present has a comment or statement for the council, come forward now.
Thank you. I just have a short message from Mayor Cuffusi, who had to be at a family event. "Esteemed members of the Provo Municipal Council, over the last few years, this city council has made the reduction of over occupancy a priority. The proposed ordinance change you are considering tonight is part of those efforts. As mayor, I have tried to be very supportive of your priority." As mayor, I have tried to be very supportive of your priorities. I prepared this message because, in connection with the effort to reduce over occupancy, I've observed that some members of our community, particularly young single professionals, have gotten the message that they are not welcome or valued here. This is an unfortunate and harmful impression for anyone to have. So whatever actions this council may take on over occupancy, I hope you will strive, in whatever ways you can, to also send a very clear message to young, single professionals that they are a valued and needed part of our community. Provo's economic development, the vibrancy of our downtown, our thriving tech sector, and even our low property taxes hinge to some degree on Provo being an inviting place for young professionals, including young, single professionals. My message to young, single professionals in Provo is, you are wanted here in Provo and needed here in Provo. We value you and sincerely hope you will continue to choose to live and play in Provo. Mayor Michelle Kafusi.
Thank you, Mr. Paxman. Any other comments?
David Atchison, Chair for the Wasatch Neighborhood. I support this ordinance. We have an instance on Lower Brier, which is in our neighborhood, in which a flight attendant from Virginia is, has repeated violations. It's violations, they're reported, she cleans it up, the city says, okay, great, there's nothing to enforce against because it's all cleaned up, puts in more folks. Violation is reported, and as I've said, like, it's rinse and repeat. And it's a nuisance. That's a nuisance. It doesn't, so, so that's why I think that an ordinance like this, ordinances like this are going to be helpful. From anecdotal experience, my, my experience with the Community Development Department over the past 20 years is that landlords are always the target for these things, that, and so I don't, and this is anecdotal, and it's not the law, but I don't think that the community, and I can't, I don't run the Community Development Department, but I think that the Community Development Department is just looking for additional teeth so that they can take care of challenges with landlords. Another thing, having served on the city council, is that as a member of the city council, things always feel, can get to feel very, not heated necessarily, I was never heated on the city council, but they can get to a point where you feel that it's like, this is the most important issue in the face of the earth, and this issue is never going to come up with anybody that would, I shouldn't say never, but that's going to call you, right? I don't think you're going to get a resident that's going to say, you know, tenants that are going to complain, I think that the Community Development Department's going to use this in a way that they can enforce. Do I get another minute? Because I'm a chair, sake. Just because I want to say one other thing to address what you said, Councilman Handley, which is, that it would be nice to live in a world where everybody was, worked with each other face-to-face, and we all knew how to do confrontation appropriately, but that is not how the system works here. And I'm not, I don't think that many of the residents here are willing to increase our taxes so that we can do it the right way, which would be one of two ways. Police officer shows up at a doorstep and enforces. So it's not your neighbors, right? Neighbors aren't turning them in, but somehow the city is looking for violations, and the city proactively does it. Or somebody in plain clothes from Community Development shows up. Because some investigation was done, there's some system in place, and it costs money to do that stuff. And so, because we don't want to expend taxes on that, then what we do is, we use volunteer reporters for those things. And a part of that is, is that there are people who are introverted, who are quiet, who are shy, who nonetheless have rights, and their rights are being violated. And one way for them to feel comfortable is call their neighborhood chair. They know that their neighborhood chair is probably a little extroverted and will advance it, but please don't use my name. Or they might call Community Development. And so, yes, folks that are in violation get really unhappy, and sad, and cry, and yell. And, and not to be callous, but one thing that they can do is be in compliance. So, the people that are in, shouldn't, the people that should not be in trouble are the people who are reporting anonymously. The people that should be corrected are the people who are in violation. And, or being investigated, and that's why we have Community Development, because sometimes things are reported, and it's not a violation, and they find that out. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Atchison. Did you have a?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, see none. Close public comment, and then do we have any?
I have a question. Brian, you can help me with this, then. If this person from out of town that goes over and over and over again, I cleaned it up, I'm no longer a nuisance, is this, it's the judge that's going to determine whether it has become a nuisance or not, isn't it? Or how's that going to work? Because if they just clean it up, say, see, I'm no longer a nuisance, it's the same thing with the RDL, I mean, with the disclosure.
Well, no, the idea is that, using those tools, using the RDL or using the already-on-the-books over occupancy law is a one-off. It's a one-off that can be repeated over and over again, but every time it's repeated, it's only a $750 fine, right? So, for an instance where you've got a frequent repeater, then you have an opportunity to, now, we haven't tried it, so I can't guarantee you exactly off the top, you know, upfront how it's going to work, but, but the vision is that we get a test case out there where we actually put on evidence that they're always repeating, and we ask for $5,000 in damages instead of a $750 criminal fine, right? Or we ask for an injunction from the judge in joining that person from ever doing it again, and then the next time they do it, we haul them in for contempt of court for violating the court order, in addition to the criminal penalties for doing it in the first place, right? So, that's the, that's the intent.
So this just seems like it's mostly for the malicious, very malicious.
Yes, entirely.
Can I go back to, is there, to the question of whether or not we can tweak the language a little bit so that it, I mean, part of this is what Mayor Kafusi's comments getting at, I mean, I do think there's inaccurate understandings of what we're talking about here, but I don't know if it wouldn't hurt to add some language or some specification. I know you were sort of expressing some hesitancy about how to do it, but I mean, is there value in taking some time to do that so that we have, have a public nuisance ordinance that is a little bit more clearly aimed at the, at the landlords? The reason I say that is because it seems like there's multiple layers that we've just created for tenants to be subject to misdemeanors. And I feel like, I feel like what we've got right now is enough, and I don't, I am worried about perception that we're going after a certain group of people, when in fact, what we are actually going after, as you've been healthfully pointing out, is, you know, a small group of misbehaving landlords, basically. And I want, I want to, I want us to have the tools to be able to enforce against them. I'm just worried about the casualties along the way.
And I, I guess I'm, I don't, I don't want to be flippant about this, so, so tell me if, so if it comes across as flippant, that's not where I'm coming from, so I hope that's not the case. But I'm having trouble wrapping my head around the concept of how anyone, how anyone in that, that you're describing could be harmed by this, other than the momentary offense of having their living situation, which is already illegal, being called a public nuisance when they read about this, the passage of this ordinance in the paper, and then it's over. And the reason why I say that is because this isn't a crim, this isn't a criminal violation. This is a civil proceeding, and it's a civil proceeding that requires notice and time to be allowed to cure the violation before the things that I just talked about in the worst-case scenarios can even be invoked. So from a procedural step, I just, I can't even, there, I mean, maybe there's a, I get that there's potentially a stigma issue out there of saying, if I live with seven roommates, I'm being called a public nuisance? Okay, I guess that could create a, I guess that creates a stigma, although, I mean, we've already had the conversation several times about the fact that our law already calls, already calls that illegal, regardless of whether you adopt this or not. So, I don't know how that adds to the stigma necessarily, but maybe I'm just misperceiving that. But as far as, but it doesn't make it an additional criminal violation beyond criminal violations that can already be pursued. So, I'm, I'm not following what the potential detriment to the kind of person you're talking about is, unless they are the kind of person, and this was my follow-up to Mr. Atchison's comment a minute ago. For, from having been on the enforcement side of it, for every person that calls up and says, I can't believe that my neighbor didn't come talk to me before they reported to me, we have neighbors who come in and say, you cannot let them know that this is me, because I have talked to them about it five times, and they have told me to my face they have no intention of coming into compliance, and that if I report on them again, they're going to slash my tires. Right? I mean, that kind of thing happens too, right? Which is why there's the anonymous reporting. So, so I don't, I don't know procedurally how this tool could be used against anyone other than a repeat belligerent offender.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian, because that's exactly what I was saying. I'm strained to see how there could be casualties, other than the people that need to be enforced on. I mean, the explanations tonight have been clear. If someone's concerned, they can read the record, they can look to the minutes, where the city stands. I think this is long overdue to have some method of enforcing against those who are repeat offenders that just don't care. And on balance, I can't see how there's going to be casualties along the way.
I support these 11 words being added to our code, but I also would like to follow what Mayor Kafusi, you know, asked us or encouraged us to do, which was to be, you know, loud and clear that young, single professionals in our community are wanted, are valued, and are what, are part of what makes Provo, Provo. And, and we hope, we appreciate them and wish them the best, and are glad that they're part of our community. And so I hope, I hope that message can be heard loud and clear.
Mr. Sewell.
I support this and feel like it will be a valuable tool to help in the most egregious of cases, and I, I agree that I really don't see potential for this being misused. Just a month or two ago, I was invited to a neighborhood meeting where a group of neighbors were distraught over a very egregious situation that had been going on for years, and the city's been doing the best they can. And it was one of those situations where the landlord just wasn't, wasn't complying, so I really see the need for this type of tool. I'd also like to echo what Chair Harding said, and I really liked the mayor's message. I asked Deputy Mayor Paxman to text me the last couple of sentences, which he was kind enough to do, and her message is my message, I would just like to repeat word-for-word, with the exception of one word that I'll add, what she said. My message to young, single professionals in Provo is, you are wanted here in Provo and needed here in Provo. We value you and sincerely hope you will continue to choose to live and play here. And I would add, work here as well. So, thank you.
So, I would echo what the mayor had to say, what Dave Sewell and the chair has said, and I don't, I don't want any group to feel unwelcome, that would be unfortunate. I do want to let you know that last night, I had a developer come visit and show me the plans of what's being proposed on South State Street, in addition to the one project that has already broken ground, which is being designed and built for young, single adults. The one that has four individual, well, four individuals living in each unit, and is designed for that demographic. So out in front of the Charter School on South State Street is room for a lot of development, I think it's 140 units, and they would be two-bedroom and two-bath. And the target that he's looking to market it to are millennials. Now, this is the same developer, or should I say the owner, I visited with a year and a half or two ago, and it was with same owner of the property, but a different developer. So the developer has changed, and when I saw it the first time, it was one full bedroom and a small side bedroom and only one bathroom. And I said, well, you need to understand my neck of the woods. This is a very desirable place for young, single adults to live. And if you don't provide two full bedrooms and two full bathrooms, then you're not going to give them an opportunity to live in these units, at least they wouldn't be attracted to live in these units. And so right now, it's open to married couples, or whoever wants to live there, but it, by having that extra bathroom to go with each bedroom and have your private accommodations, it really kind of meets their needs. And a certain portion of these will also be for sale, not just for rent. I don't know the exact portion, that depends on his pro forma, because he wants to keep a certain amount to sell a certain amount and get his cost down, and then keep the rest as an investment. So, I, I like the project. I will warn you that it's four stories tall, but considering the neighborhood between State Street and the railroad tracks, I don't think it's inappropriate. So, I just thought I'd share that, because we have encouraged developers, at least I have encouraged developers, to build something for this demographic. I mean, there's developers building for every other demographic, and so why not this demographic?
Mr. Handley.
I'll just express my appreciation for your, to my colleagues for letting me ask all those questions into Brian, for, I just felt the need to get some clarification on those issues, both for myself and for the public. I think it's important that we're clear on why we're doing it, and how it's going to work, and so on. So I, I am inclined to support it, but I, I want to make sure that we, we don't quit trying to solve some of these problems, both in terms of occupancy issues and, and realities and/or perceptions about exclusions. I think, I think what Mayor Kafusi has said is very important, and I certainly support it 100%, and I'm grateful that she made, made those comments available to us. And so I just, anyway, I just wanted to clarify and thank you all for letting me ask those questions. Thanks.
Any other comment? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on the implied motion on an ordinance to amend Provo City Code to place over occupancy on the list of nuisances. All in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous. And Mr. Paxman, if you'll relay our thanks to the mayor for that. Item eight is an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code Title IV regarding personnel policies in Title IV. This will be presented by Mr. Daniel Softly, our Human Resources Division Director.
Thank you. As we've discussed in work session several times now, this is the final product to do a much-needed update to Title IV. The code deals with personnel policies. The changes that have been made, just kind of in a high-level form, we've reorganized these chapters, we've consolidated sections that should have been off by themselves and sections that should have been with others, so that it flows a lot better. We've aligned the code with city policy and practice and organizational changes that have happened since the last time. And we've removed the occupational index, which lists all of the city positions and pay grades assigned to them, in favor of publishing that on the city website. And then we've also made other minor tweaks for clarification. We've eliminated some redundancies where certain things were covered in multiple areas. What I want to do is just kind of go through each chapter on a very high level and summarize the changes that have been made, the significant ones. Chapter 4.01 is dealing with the classified civil service. We listed... These are our sworn police officers and firefighters. This section deals with the commission that is formed to hear employee appeals. And we've updated this section to list what actions can be appealed specifically. This is not new language in the civil service. It is to the code. But what it does is it copies language from our adopted civil service rules that were done in concert with the police chief and the fire chief and the civil service commission in an open meeting. They are also taken from state code to make sure that... So basically, it's the same language that you're going to find in both of those areas as well. And then we added language at the very end of the appeal process that indicates that if a party is not happy with the results, that it can go to the Court of Appeals as governed by law. So those are the only changes in that section there. Chapter 4.02 is dealing with the unclassified civil service. These are the... Basically, the rest of the employees' equivalent of the classified civil service. What we've done there, some of the changes in there is we've updated the list of department heads. With the recent changes in community development, we've created Development Services Director, Community Neighborhood Services Director, and then also, since the last time the code, the Department of Customer Service was made from a division to a department. And so we've listed that as a department head. And then we relocated existing language about the grievance procedure in the appeals board. What used to be in 403 is now in 402. But nothing's changed about that. The language all stays the same. Chapter 4.03 is our employee rules and practices.
Could I ask you a question right there? As we were scrolling through, I saw something about the Chief Administrative Officer, Deputy Mayor. With our recent change, I believe we now have a Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Assistant?
I believe it's officially classified as Chief Deputy in the Mayor's Office.
Okay. So I just didn't know if it was included in that list, and if it should be or shouldn't be. No? Okay, thank you.
Chapter 403, this is a newly-named section, Employee Rules and Practices. A lot of the items in here were moved from 4.02 to make sure that it's understood that these apply to both the classified civil service and the unclassified civil service as well. As part of these changes, we've removed specific accrual rates for vacation and sick in favor of a reference to approved rates specified in Provo City Personnel Policy. The rates haven't changed, they've stayed the same. But we added language regarding any budget impact. So if anything goes up that increases the budget impact, obviously, that would require oversight by the council, and that language is included in the code. We also changed recently how we gave our vacation and sick leave accruals. Previously, we did it on a bi-weekly basis from the very time you start, and you sort of earn your bank overtime. We have front-loaded a lot of those vacations and sick leave accruals to help transition employees, particularly experienced employees from other agencies, to be able to come work for Provo City. As a result of doing that, protecting against any sort of abuses, we've made employees ineligible to receive a vacation and sick leave buyout if they terminate with the city during their new hire probationary period. And then we also, in conjunction, along the same lines, we eliminated the waiting period to use your vacation. Previously, it was six months. In today's market, that's not an effective strategy. And so we've eliminated that to help, as I said earlier, ease people into working with Provo City. We also... There were some other leaves in there that were specified. We have stated that those other leaves offered by the city are also governed by Provo City policy. These are dealing with your funeral leave, your organ donor leaves, other leaves along those ways. Chapter 4.04 is dealing with pay plans. We made some clarifications on some of our pay practices. We haven't changed any, but when going over this code, I realized that these could be clarified for some. The first one that we made a change on is the way the code used to read. Is it strongly implied that directors were supposed to bring in employees at the first step of the range? We have amended that so that department heads have the authority, obviously, to bring in an employee at any step of the range that they feel is commensurate with their experience and their education and their qualifications. There was a section in the code that dealt with total remuneration, and based on the way it was read, it basically said that the pay step that was assigned to you in the pay grade was the only remuneration that you could get from the city. Obviously, that's not accurate. Employees are eligible for overtime, there are car allowances and other work-related allowances. We changed that code to make sure that it references only to your base pay amount that is tied to the pay table that is in the ordinance as well. Promotions, transfers, demotions, those are all handled by city policy, and we amended this to refer to that. There was a clarification that all overtime must be paid. Previously, it said all approved overtime. Fortunately, if you can work overtime without approval, you still have to pay for it, and then you can deal with the employee who worked it without authorization afterwards. We also clarified that non-executive employees can be designated as FLSA exempt. When this code was originally written, I believe the only positions in the city that were exempt from overtime at that time were department heads and members in that executive group. We do have managers that are not part of that group that are also exempt from overtime in accordance with the law. And then we raised the limit on comp-time accrual banks to 80. This is a change that was in policy, and we noticed that hadn't been updated. This is basically saying how much time an employee can actually bank of comp time when they get it. So we want to add a higher limit, but we still want to limit how much you can actually bank to prevent, you know, keeping that liability for an extended period of time. And then the last change we made in Chapter 404 is we removed the occupational index in favor of publishing it on our website. We did add language that it'll still be reviewed and included as part of the budget process, that the council gets a chance to look at it at least once annually. The intent is to put it on the Provo City's HR website, and so that everyone can look at it in real time. I believe that it was in here kind of as almost a relic of... Before the internet, of one place where the public could go and see, you know, what the city positions are and what they're paid. Nowadays, they're not going to our code to find it in there, they are actually going to our Provo City website, our HR website. And I think this is a great change to basically let the public know the positions that are in the city and how much they're getting compensated for. So that's just a quick summary of all the changes. It's not quite 27 pages, it's 20, so getting off easy. Any questions? Cliff?
Where it talks about longevity increases, I didn't catch this before, but it talks about employees who started before 1987 or earlier. And it talks about every five years longevity pay, up to a maximum of four. Someone who was employed by 1987 would have reached that fourth period seven to 12 years ago.
Correct.
Does that clause even need to be in there anymore?
I would... Yes. We have had, on occasion, that we have had employees who have left the city service and then have come back. And in that situation, we have enacted it again. That's what the ordinance was decided at the time. So we had one particular employee who took a 10-year-or-so gap. If they were to come back and they had been employed full-time before 1987, we would give them their longevity as well. They'd be eligible for it. They don't... The break in service doesn't count towards their accrued time. So say they started for, you know, they worked with us for only six years, and then they came back. They'd still have the smallest amount, but then they could earn it. At some point, though, yes. When I started 19 years ago, I would say that almost a third to a half of our employees were on longevity. And we've waited them all out. They've all retired happily, which is great, and we're down to only a handful now. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Softly. Any other questions before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open this item for public comment. Seeing none, we will close it. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on an ordinance amending Provo City Code Title IV regarding personnel policies in Title IV. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item nine is resolution designating the Director of Community and Neighborhood Services, Department of Provo City, as the certifying officer as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We will look to Mr. Wayne Parker.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is probably the... This is likely the easiest issue you have to deal with tonight. After following our restructuring of Development Services and Community Neighborhood Services, as you'll recall, we moved the CDBG and federal funds staff out of the Redevelopment Agency and put them in Community and Neighborhood Services. And this is just an action required because we designated the Director of the Redevelopment Agency before as the certifying officer for HUD-related funding programs. Just in order to complete that transition, we're now asking you to designate the Community and Neighborhood Services Director as that certifying officer. So this is pretty easy. If you had a consent item tonight, we'd have suggested this been on it. But that's the very quick explanation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any questions? Seeing none, I will open this for public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any discussion among the council? I will call for a vote on item number nine. All in favor? That's unanimous. Which brings us, with the continuation of 10 and 11, to our final item for the evening, which is a resolution approving the assignment of the parking lease with 80 East to Provo City Housing Authority. This will be presented by...
Mr. Chair, this is an RDA item, so if you could...
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you so much.
Turn it over to...
Wonderful, I appreciate that. If there is no objection, we will now recess as a municipal council and reconvene as the Redevelopment Agency of Provo by unanimous consent.
Should we recess or should we disclose? Because the committee council may want to turn it back. We have to close. We're just going to convene at that RDA.
I'm fine with either one.
I have no objection. I'm not sure I can wrap my head around what I need to say for that to happen, but I believe we are now adjourned as the municipal council and are convened as the Redevelopment Agency of Provo.
That's correct. Thank you. We would like to hear from David Walter, who will explain why the council needs to approve reassigning parking spaces to the Provo Housing Authority.
Chair, connect to members of the Redevelopment Agency Board. Good evening. The item before you tonight is a resolution asking for the mayor... I'm sorry, the Chief Executive Officer of the Redevelopment Agency to have the authority to sign documents relating with the transfer of an existing parking lease with 80 East to the Provo City Housing Authority. This relates to a portion of the agency's parking rights within the Wells Fargo parking structure. Some time ago, the agency entered into a lease agreement with Forge Development for the development of 80 East. That included 120 spaces to be leased by Forge Development. Forge currently pays a monthly lease on a quarterly basis to Norco Vista LLC, who is the owner of both the Wells Fargo Building and the Wells Fargo Parking Structure. Forge Development has opted some time ago to put this property up for sale. This property is at the corner of 100 North and 100 East. It's the last really remaining undeveloped piece on the block. Provo City Housing Authority, in examining their portfolios, opted to buy this property and develop it with 74 units, 30 of which would be assisted housing, and the remaining 44 units would be for senior housing. The requirements of the lease require the Redevelopment Agency to approve any transfer of its spaces. And so Provo City Housing Authority is asking the Redevelopment Agency to approve the transfer and to sign off on both the collateral assignment as well as the estoppel certificate to make this transfer happen. Provo City Housing Authority intends to make an application to the... Well, has made an application at this point to the Board for Low-Income Housing Tax Credits, which would build a portion of the project. So I'm available for any questions.
Seeing no questions, thank you, David.
Thank you.
We would like to open this up to the public if the one member of the public would like to say something. That's you, Dave.
Oh, sorry. Did I say enforcement? I'll... I'll be able to say it.
Thank you. Bringing this back to the council.
Location, location.
Yes, exactly.
Any discussion on this item? Go ahead.
You know, in our work session, we talked about, and it was also Mr. Vernon mentioned, that all eight of these spaces are probably not required for his development. There'll be a point in time when they'll be able to come back, and the city's... I just didn't know if that needed to be reflected in the notes of our discussion.
So currently, the lease allows for 120 spaces. Mr. Vernon's indicated that he will not need that many and could potentially give as much as half back to the city. At such time as he makes application for his project, he will go through the process with the Development Services Department to make sure that he's got the appropriate approvals and applications to make that happen. So once that happens, the agency could have the potential to recoup a portion of the... In all likelihood, will recoup a portion of the spaces that it's currently signed out, and then we'd have those available to work with somebody else.
Thanks. And I would think that, from what I understand, there's actually a motivation to turn over the spaces they don't need because it's costing them money.
Exactly. There's a financial incentive for them to give up paying for the spaces that they don't need.
Go ahead.
Also, with the question that we've had in the past about allocation versus designation, these are all allocations. It sounds like we've also almost put to bed the opportunity to designate any parking.
Right. He would have to follow the terms of his lease with Norco Vista, the property owner, to make that happen. So, yeah, we would not have the ability to designate that space.
Right. Good point, Gary. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, I would like to see a call for a vote. All in favor of the implied motion? And the vote is unanimous. And if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Redevelopment Agency and/or Provo City Council meeting. Thank you.